Shall we ask him to do it again?
Good morning, we're back online. Chaplain Feroni, are you still with us, sir? Chaplain Feroni, are you still in the meeting, sir?
So we'll start from a moment of silence, Ms. Prime.
Thank you, Mayor.
Again, thank you for Chaplain Feroni and for being there and Hallie for doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to do a moment of silence. And as we come to the second year of the tragic shooting in our community. And I want to keep the 23 members of our community that lost their lives, but also their families, their friends, in our city of El Paso, in our thoughts, and also our first responders that ran in the buildings, and everyone that was there on August 3rd. In our prayers and thoughts that this will never happen again to our community, but in our country again. There is no room for hatred. So please, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, please remember to keep your cameras on at all times so we can ensure a quorum is maintained. And if you would like to speak, please notify the mayor. And for this meeting, once you obtain the floor, you will have up to 10 minutes for debate. Staff, please turn on your cameras when presenting or speaking. Everyone else, please mute your microphones to reduce any background noise. That brings us to the mayor's proclamations. And this morning, the proclamation is "El Paso Strong Day."
Representative Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation by the City of El Paso, Texas. Whereas people from across the city of El Paso were outraged and deeply saddened by the horrific events that took place in El Paso on August 3rd, 2019, when a gunman went on a racially motivated shooting rampage that claimed the lives of 23 men, women, and children. And whereas, valiantly risking their own lives, a number of individuals attempted to usher shoppers and employees to safety and protect others in the line of fire. Six minutes after receiving the first report of the attack, police arrived and apprehended the gunman, bringing the incident to an end with a final total of 23 dead and 23 wounded. And whereas, victims killed that day ranged in age from 15 to 90 years old, and many more, including children as young as two years old, suffered traumatic injuries. The Walmart store was a popular shopping destination for both El Pasoans and Mexican nationals, taking day trips across the border. And a number of Mexican nationals were among those who lost their lives. And whereas, in the aftermath of this tragic day, El Pasoans demonstrated the spirit of their community was far too resilient to be broken by one disgraceful act of hate. Alongside stories of heroism during the massacre, were reports of everyday people lighting up at hospitals to donate blood, offering profound compassion, support, and comfort to the surviving families and rallying behind the mantra "El Paso Strong." And whereas, the incident, which was the deadliest mass shooting targeting Latinos in Texas history, was a devastating shock to a city that is renowned for its welcoming hospitality and close-knit sense of community. Two years have passed. Since that terrible event made headlines across the world, but the passage of time has not diminished the tremendous sense of grief felt over the loss of 23 innocent lives, nor has it lessened the resolve of the people of El Paso to stand together against insidious forces of hatred, prejudice, and violence. And whereas, the city of El Paso pays tribute to the victims and offers heartfelt condolences to the families and friends who carry on their memories. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso that August 3rd, 2021 shall be known as "El Paso Strong." Signed by the Honorable Mayor Astradiza.
Thank you, Representative Rivera. And I can tell you that we united ourselves, our city, and our community. And we'll continue to be El Paso Strong. Thank you, and may God bless everyone. Ms. Prime.
Yes, sir, that brings us to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered by city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by council members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. Council may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting.
Yes, Ms. Prime. Good morning, council and mayor, staff as well. Proposed revisions. For the August 3rd city council meeting. Page four, item nine, delete per capita improvement. Page 19, item 38, move to the forefront following city council items for Representative Zarago. Page 20, item 43, postpone four weeks per planning and inspections. Page 21, item 44, postpone two weeks per planning and inspections. Page 21, item 45, postpone two weeks per planning and inspections. Page 21, item 46, postpone two weeks per planning and inspections. And page 22, item 47, postpone two weeks per planning and inspections.
Second.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as revised. On that motion, Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Molinar.
Aye.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Lizarca.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. We now turn to page 10, item number 24. This is discussion in action regarding a resolution that the city of El Paso appoint to the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority, Joe D. Wardy, for position one, whose term will expire on February 1st, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number 24. On that motion, Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Molinar.
Aye.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Lizarca.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number 25 is discussion in action to approve a resolution to call for the 87th Texas Legislature to withdraw House Bill 3 and Senate Bill 1, and instead take proactive measures to protect voting rights and promote access to voting.
Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I put this item up in solidarity with the Texas Democrats who have been out of the state now for a month. It's also been in solidarity with other cities across Texas that are passing an almost identical resolution such as Austin and Dallas. So I think my colleagues were working on this with me, and I hope to get your support. The laws that are being proposed just discriminate against people in this community. And as elected officials, we know the importance of access to voting. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. And thank you, Rep. Hernandez and Rep. Schwartzwein for putting this on.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number 25. On that motion, Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Molinar.
Nay.
Salcido.
Thank you for my colleagues for putting this item on.
Rodriguez.
I just want to make a quick statement. I worked up the elections from 2003 to 2018, so for 15 years. And I'm proud to say that I never once saw any discrimination. I never saw anybody turned away from voting. And for that reason, I vote no.
Rivera.
Again, I have to thank my three colleagues for placing this on the agenda. Definitely a overwhelming yes.
Lizarca. Representative Lizarca.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Prime. Aye, I thought you heard me.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you, ma'am. And the motion passes with six affirmative votes. Representatives Molinar, Rodriguez voting nay, the remainder of council voting aye, the motion does pass.
Thank you, council.
Item number 26 is discussion in action to direct the city manager and city attorney to initiate the process to amend Title 10, Chapter 10.12.050, alcohol prohibited in public places to expand the area specified to include the present boundaries of the Valverde Neighborhood Association and the Washington Delta Neighborhood Association, and to prepare an action item for the consideration of the city council to effectuate the amendment of 10.12.050 to be introduced honor before the regular city council meeting on August 31st, 2021.
Representative Mayor Protem.
I just had a question. There was a presentation. I had a question for after the discussion from Representative Zarago on this item.
Thank you. Let me see the presentation. We have Mayor Protem and Representative Vanello.
Mayor, I sent you a text, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're sending it on the other phone, that's why.
Oh!
Yes, ma'am.
I thought I sent it to you on your city phone.
No. Go ahead, Representative Zarago.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lizarca. As I explained in the agenda review meeting yesterday, we've been talking about the possibility of this change with the city manager and the city attorney for the last few months. And after posting it on the agenda for this meeting, it was eventually determined that we will not be able to move ahead with it because of what is stipulated in state law. The state of Texas only allows city to ban open containers or consumption of alcohol in public places, in city centers, which state law defines as areas with 90% or greater commercial zoning. These residential neighborhoods clearly don't meet that very specific threshold. There is, however, still an ongoing problem in these neighborhoods, represented by both the Washington Delta and the Valverde Neighborhood Associations, which are both in District 8. In the time since we opened the temporary shelters for the homeless in these neighborhoods around the beginning of the pandemic, people, excuse me, are loitering in much greater number in public places like alleyways, bus stops, et cetera, and consuming alcohol, which has led to altercations amongst themselves and with nearby residences and businesses. This issue has persisted even since the temporary shelters have transitioned out and been replaced with permanent facilities elsewhere. We are going to continue to try to find solutions. For one, we're working with Sun Metro and the police department to post additional signage and increase enforcement on Sun Metro's rules for conduct at bus stops. I want to say thank you to the city manager, Tommy Gonzalez, and to city attorney Carla Nieman, who have both committed to do whatever they can to help find a new way to address this problem. I believe we can find a new solution. And Ms. Nieman, I don't know if you have anything else to add? And I don't know if Ms. Dion Mack also would like to add anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Lizarca. Yes, certainly, we will continue to gather more information from your neighborhood associations in regards to this ongoing problem. We've tasked our folks in the city attorney's office to figure out another alternative solution to address the ongoing problem in the neighborhood. We know that it's becoming a nuisance to the neighborhood, and we'll certainly continue to work with your district to find alternative ways to address this issue for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nieman. Thank you again, Representative Zarago.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Dion Mack on the line by any chance, or no?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't know if you had any input, Ms. Mack, on this item right now? Or we can come back, circle back with you.
Yes, ma'am. So, as you know, the team continues to work with the community and try to find and invent of ways to really resolve some of these issues. Our PAR officers have been very engaged with trying to find solutions. And we want to make sure that we continue to listen to our communities and try to address any of the issues that we continue to see. And it may not be the traditional way that we work at some of these issues, but we want to continue to sort of look at what the law allows and then think about ways that we can be able to make our communities feel that they're safe, that they can walk their neighborhoods in the evening, that these things are not being ignored by our leadership and by our police department. So we appreciate all the feedback that we've received over the last few months. And we so appreciate the work of the Neighborhood Association to be so accommodating during these very difficult times in our community to really welcome people who needed a safe place to stay. And so we want to resolve this as we move forward out of the pandemic. So thank you so much for the feedback, ma'am. And we thank you for ongoing feedback to help us understand what's going on so we can be responsive to any needs of our community.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mack. So, Mayor, we don't have to take any action on this item? If I need to delete it for now?
Yes, ma'am.
Delete it.
Yeah, we have, before we delete it, and I think we have Representative Schwartzwein and Representative Hernandez that would like to speak on the item for a minute. And then I think it'd be appropriate to have a motion to delete afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor Lizarca.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, Representative Zarago, for putting up this item. You know, these are issues that are concerned to a number of our districts throughout there. So I applaud you for doing that. And I'm hoping that as these discussions about how to curtail excessive alcohol consumption is something that we can be looking at and hopefully bringing more items to the forefront. I did have a question relating to our city attorney about the difference between commercial versus residential areas as it relates towards public alcohol consumption and the reason of why this needs to be deleted. And perhaps an example of where something like this could be applied if it was differently zoned district.
Right. Representative Schwartzwein, your question specifically as to the prohibition is, it's limited under state law, under the Texas Alcoholic and Beverage Code. It restricts the city's ability to prohibit alcohol in a central business district. It's defined under state code as a geographical area that is used for commercial purposes and historically has been the primary location where that business has transacted. So we define it for purposes of our local ordinance within the central business district, which is mostly downtown. The difficulty that we have is that there's a prohibition to expand that beyond that area. So currently, the only other location that we're allowed to regulate is anything that is within 1,000 feet of a homeless shelter that is not located within a central business or also a substance abuse treatment center that is not located within a central business district.
So does this give the city the ability to prohibit alcohol licenses or alcohol consumption? Or is it just open container?
It's an open container. So you wouldn't be able to walk around with an open container within this area.
Are you able to walk around with an open container in other areas of the city currently?
I don't believe so. So traditionally, like if you have, the difficulty that we have in neighborhoods is people are allowed to sit like in their front porch or in their front yard, you know, and have a drink without being approached by a police officer. But certainly, if you are considered to be, it lends itself to question whether you're intoxicated or inebriated.
Are city sidewalks considered private or public areas?
Those are private, those are public areas, city sidewalks.
Some may get sit on their porch and have an open container, but not on a residential city street or sidewalk.
Correct.
I don't know what sort of research you've done with this item, but does it allow, does the city have any ability to limit the amount of alcohol licenses within a commercial district?
So the city doesn't necessarily regulate alcohol licenses, right? That's done under the Texas Alcohol Bureau. So those licenses are applied by a business owner through the state of Texas. We regulate it through zoning, which is allowed in whatever commercial districts. Our zoning regulations permit bars or grocery stores or the like that sell alcohol. But those licenses are issued by the state.
So the state and your research would supersede our ability to limit how many alcohol license could be in a certain geographical area?
Right, so alcohol licenses are, so historically, the state of Texas has preempted the sale of alcohol to municipalities through that, through those regulations. So the only allowance under state law currently for municipality is to prohibit it within their central business association or anything that's within 1,000 feet of a homeless shelter or substance abuse center. That's how much authority is afforded to a municipality at this time.
Okay, well, I appreciate Representative Zarago for putting this item up. You know, these are questions and issues that we are looking at and dealing with, not just within my office, but across the city. So hopefully, there's ability to work creatively with our city staff to look at ways to address some of these concerns from the community as it relates towards excessive alcohol consumption. Thank you again, Representative Zarago, for that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Representative Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for putting this item on, Representative Lizarca. I did want to read a statement I received this Friday from the Fox Plaza Shopping Center, one of the managing partners. His name is Don. We had invited him to speak on this issue, but I don't think he had enough time to come out. But pretty much what he is saying, and if I can read, that the issues began to increase strongly last year and has since continued to know we have employed personal security services to manage the situation. The latest increase seems to coincide with the closing of the Chavita Rec Center in April. I know you have attended a Zoom meeting with the Neighborhood Association recently, so you are aware of the problem. We need to know what you intend to do about the problem, and we need solutions. The central police unit is depleted and understaffed. The problem is leading to increase in crime, theft, indecent exposure, public intoxication, and more. We have been a staple of the community for over 50 years with thousands of shoppers weekly that are residents in your district. I need to know what action is planned immediately to curb and solve the problem. And he wants us to contact him. But those are the type of pressing responses that we're hearing now from businesses. And so I couldn't express the sense of urgency there is to allow for additional policing, whether that be the volunteer program, volunteer community policing, whether it's the PAR, whatever it may be. There is a clear problem, and constituents and businesses are starting to reach out en masse. But in addition to the explanation here, Mrs. Nieman, can you clarify, is there a current city ordinance, not a state law, is there a current city ordinance that prohibits drinking in public places to include parks, rec centers, sidewalks, streets?
So we do prohibit drinking within our city parks. There are state law provisions that prohibit people from being intoxicated in public, obviously. But the request that came in from Representative Lizarca's office was to establish the prohibition of open containers similar to what we have in the downtown business district within her neighborhood, within the several neighborhoods that have approached her. And the issue there is that it's a predominantly residential area, which is how we are prohibited. So we currently have on our books the open container limitation within the Central Business Association. But then, we also prevent parks or people visiting the parks and having drinking within that area. So it's a matter of coordinating, as you stated, additional police response or neighborhood associations that would be able to notify the police when situations like this are arising.
So currently, the way I'm understanding, outside of the central business district, people can go and walk on streets and drink publicly? Because there's no city ordinance?
It's prohibited. So people are prohibited from being intoxicated in public. I believe that there are instances in which people are...
Well, you're saying you believe. I need to hear like factual statements here.
Representative Hernandez?
Can you clarify if, do we have an ordinance that says, yes or no, if it's prohibited to drink, not to be intoxicated, but to drink in public places?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nieman, before, I have Chief Saru that would like to comment on the question with Representative Hernandez.
Sure, but this is a legal question. So I wanted our city attorney to answer it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
And then if the chief can step in.
We don't have regulations prohibiting the... The city of El Paso doesn't have regulations that say you're prohibited from urinating in public or prohibited from being intoxicated in public. Those are state law provisions that our police department enforces. What we do have on the books is the Central Business Association prohibition of open containers within that district. So our police department enforces state law that makes those actions illegal.
Well, it's my understanding that there are home rural municipalities have the authority. And if we don't, then I need to understand clearly, because I'm not understanding that today in this discussion, that home rural municipalities have the authority to prohibit drinking in public places to include bus benches, sidewalks, streets. So if there's a state law, fine, but can we do one, a city ordinance, that we can adopt and then we can start to enforce? Because that's what I'm hearing from the public that's lacking. And so there just needs to be more coordination, and it needs to be clearer. And I'm just not getting that sense today.
Right, so the purpose, the way that I would recommend and moving forward with this situation is that when I spoke to Representative Lizarca about the specific wording of request on today's agenda that I notified her that we couldn't do the expansion of what we do in the Central Business Association with the residential neighborhoods, but that what I was interested in is hearing what the complaints were from the neighborhoods, and that we would come back with recommendations on how to address the problems that are being faced, apparently not just in District 8, but also in your district, ma'am. So we certainly can do things of that sort, other cities have done it. But we want to know what types of issues various districts are having. Like the complaint that you read here today from the Fox Business Plaza, those are the types of issues that we would like to be made aware of so that we can target them depending on what... be made aware of so that we can target them depending on what is happening in the various districts.
Now, Ms. Neiman, Representative Hernandez?
The shared boundaries in that area.
I'm gonna allow Chief Saru to speak because you said this is a legal question, and the police does enforce the law and they understand the law, and I think it's really important. We're going back and forth and, and, and I think that we really need to hear from Chief Saru who enforces the law. And if you wanna, if you said you, you're asking for a legal question and a legal answer, I think there's no one better than the chief. Chief Saru?
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council Assistant Chief Victor Saru. I just wanted to make a notation of our police area representative, Commander Tom Benia and his staff, along with the Community Services Coordinator, Santa Jimenez. They've been making these meetings out with the, the associations. They've been meeting biweekly. We definitely hear the concerns out there and we're looking at all options available to address this, as well as working with other, uh, agencies on the matter. Uh, to chime in a little more on Representative Hernandez's question on rules associated with alcohol, our city attorney Neiman is correct. There are overlapping laws that affect this. For example, if you're in a vehicle, obviously you cannot have an open container anywhere. If you're at a store and you, they have no license for off permisses, you obviously cannot drink outside of the store either. So there are overlapping items on that to include as well as the park and all. So we're looking at the options that are available, meeting with, uh, the community. We've heard about the problems with Fox Plaza and we're gonna, we're meeting with them as well in regards to what we can do to address the, the issues out there, whether they be criminal trespass, signage, or warnings that we could pursue long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Hernandez. Thank you, Chief Saru.
May I ask you a message?
No other questions, Mayor.
I'd like to, if there's no other questions, I would, I'd like to comment on this. That's, I'm sorry, Representative Rivera, did you have comments?
Sorry. Representative Rivera, there's one other question, sir. And then you, unless you would like to go first.
Yes, sir, he can go first.
Okay. Representative Rivera?
And I, I know, and, and Chief Saru, I know you're, you're saying you're looking at, 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 uh, at the Fox Plaza area. Is it, it, and maybe Mr., Representative Hernandez can answer this one for me too as well. Is it mainly during the time that they have their, their swap meet going on, or is it all hours and, all hours of any day throughout the week?
Well, obviously, we definitely need to gather some more data as to when the problems are occurring. If, if, if the gathering of individuals are during the swap meet and it's open to the public, obviously you wouldn't be able to go with criminal trespass there. So we'll do some more research on it, reach out to the property owners, and find a way to address the problem as best as possible.
And, and, and the question that was asked earlier, and, and it's a legitimate question in my eyes too, because I still have family that lives in the area, uh, of, is the bus benches. I know they can't, I know it's a public, it's a public facility and they can't go in there and, and sit there and enjoy their beer and let other customers that are waiting for the bus wait out in the sun. Correct, sir?
Well, obviously, um, signage can assist. Whether it's gonna be something that's enforceable by law, we'll have to definitely review and indications right now with the TABC code, it's, it wouldn't be applicable. But that does not mean that we seek voluntary compliance. I will definitely work with Sun Metro to see if anything can be done in regards to that. Um, especially at this time right now with the heat and, and search individuals, whether they're homeless or any other individuals in our city are gonna seek, uh, some type of shade shelter and all. That's where we come in also, working with our, our coalitions in the area to see what we can do to assist everyone out in the city.
Well, I thank you, I thank you, Chief, uh, you and your staff for, for, for looking into it, please, that area. And like I said, I still do have family there who also tells me basically the same things that you're hearing today. Uh, they can't even go catch the bus without having to share with, you know, uh, people that are drinking their, 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 their alcoholic beverage there. And I, and I think, uh, Mayor Protem as well brought up a good advice. It's, it's not only this area, it's throughout the city of El Paso. We need to curtail it. Thank you, uh, Representative Zaraga for placing on the, on the item. Thank you. On the agenda, rather. Yeah, I'm on the agenda. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. The one thing I would like to add is that the council hasn't ignored this issue. Um, neither have we in the budgeting process. As you know, we have a ten-year program to add in three hundred officers. That's net over and above the attrition rate, and we're halfway there. Uh, we today are where we were twenty years ago, uh, in terms of staffing. So this is definitely an area that we speak about quite a bit during the budgeting process and how, in, in my opinion, professional opinion, it was a neglected area. I mean, to go down by, uh, a hundred and fifty officers during the same time that you're growing exponentially, especially with the BRAC, whenever the Fort Bliss area grew, uh, was, was a mistake. And it was something that is, is being corrected, uh, and that you have supported in terms of adding those three hundred officers. We've also, in the public safety bond package, the reason why that was so important is to address things like these. Uh, if you recall, during the discussions that we had with the public and when we told them that when we put, went out and built these facilities, we were going to have operations and maintenance assigned to it. In other words, we'd have costs assigned to it, uh, not just the cost for the building itself, but also hiring additional staffing. So these side regional command center will, will, will have additional staffing. A lot of that is supervisory in nature, so it's not necessarily a true add, but it is, it is additional officers that are going to be supervising, uh, the three hundred that we have. Not, not all of those will supervise three hundred, but we needed to add additional supervisor positions. So those are additional staff that we will be hiring. We also talked about the volunteer program that we put in place that the council, um, really liked. Uh, COVID, uh, kind of, uh, upended that for a while, but we're going to be, uh, implementing that this fall. And so that is going to be something that's a welcome addition to the tools that the police department now ha- now has. In addition to that, we did some reorganizing and I've had code enforcement now reports to police. That is a, that is something that's been done in other cities and, and it's something that has really worked well and something that is going to help us add a multiplier, a force multiplier. We're painting those code enforcement vehicles like police vehicles. No, they are not police officers, but you will see more of a presence. And so it's a strategy. So the, the strategy behind that is to feel like you have more of a presence. And those are several, uh, vehicles that we will have in place. And so we can't hire officers fast enough, so strategies li- like these help in order to combat issues like what's being discussed today. In addition to that, we are adding new technology. If you recall, we introduced, uh, the trailer Overwatch, uh, equipment program. They have introduced a more, uh, advanced and more sophisticated technology today, so we'll be using that as well when we deal with crowds and in areas like, uh, the parks that we're talking about. So that might be something that's used. We are also putting in more equipment, more, more cameras in certain park areas, especially those that we're getting complaints on. So that's another strategy that we're looking to deploy. And then also, community development has worked with this particular neighborhood in order to, to look at addressing some of these concerns. Obviously, it's not addressed at this point because it's a, it's a very, uh, difficult thing to address without adding additional officers overnight. We also have, uh, added overtime to, uh, our officers',uh, uh, time in terms of the, uh, the way we attack not only the areas, they're getting a lot of attention in the bar areas, but areas like these that we could add more overtime in order to, again, attack these kind of problems as we're working through, not only having additional technology, but additional staffing. What we can do is we'll come back with a more comprehensive report. I think that this is a concern throughout the city, one in which, again, y'all have not ignored, we have not ignored in the budgeting process, and the police obviously has not ignored it either. There's several things that have been done, but there's more that needs to happen. So we will come back at a future council meeting, provide more detail, provide more information in terms of what's being done, and then see what else can be done in the future in order to, again, look at strategies to address this comprehensively.
Thank you, sir. Representative Molinar?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Um, been hearing a lot of, uh, feedback, going back and forth, and it's, uh, a lot of people are actually correct. Ms. Neiman is absolutely correct on different, uh, functions of the law and, um, city manager as well as Victor's chief, Victor Zaru. But, um, if you recall, a few years ago, there's a lot of problems at Cleveland Square with, um, people consuming alcohol, urinating in public and things like that. That became a Cleveland Park, and therefore, all of a sudden, you could get people for drinking in public possession of alcohol, consumption of alcohol, glass containers in, in, in a park and things like that. I would not say to change, um, the Fox Plaza area to a park, but I believe it's just the, the fact of creativity. If these people are littering, you could probably cite them for littering. Uh, they're doing something else illegally, whether it's under a Texas statute or a city ordinance. I believe those are the different ways that it can go. And so it just, uh, believe it's some creativity and a lot of forethought, a lot of planning, and a lot of action. But thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I think by the discussion, we see the importance of this item. So thank you, Representative Zaraga. And with that, um, would you like to make a motion to delete the item?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I do have Representatives, uh, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
No.
Sir, sorry, Rep. Zaraga. Um, I just, I just want to say a statement. I, I totally, I totally recognize what, um, city manager has brought up. Um, but truly, like, the issue that we are dealing with at different parts and different areas in our district does not solely relate towards law enforcement and towards, um, that side of the coin. There is an issue of planning, there is an issue of ordinances and how we are going and arranging and allowing different businesses to occur in areas near residential communities. That is the issue that we are hearing. I too have been in discussions, um, probably similar to Rep. Zaraga, with different items that have been brought up by neighborhood associations in my district about what we could do from a policy pers- perspective, from a policy place to look at trying to curtail some of this excessive alcohol consumption. And so to say that we are dealing only with a law enforcement issue, um, you know, I think is coming at this issue without all the tools in our toolbox. And again, I implore city staff, our legal department and otherwise, to not just put, put this onto our police department in terms of enforcement, but to look at a policy perspective in bringing us ordinances and bringing us a policy that we can enact to curtail some of these items. Um, and I want to applaud Representative Zaraga, even though I understand that this item has to be deleted as per advice, um, from our, our city attorney's office, I will not be voting in support to delete this item today.
Mayor Protem, if, if I may, um, it, uh, address some of your comments. So, I guess, about six and a half years ago, you know, I presented several ordinances that we did in another city that I managed, and it worked really, really well. And other cities in the metroplex all followed what we were doing. And so we, we didn't get a whole lot of traction on that. I know there was a lot of change and a lot of trans- transformation of different departments that we've been doing over the course of the last seven years. Uh, Ms. Neiman has been very helpful in the ordinances that I've introduced to, to her from other cities where I've managed, and she's helping us with that right now. I've shared those with Dion Mack, I've shared those with you and with at least two or three other council members, uh, that these are the type of things that we've done in other cities. I know that whenever we had a new batch of council members come in, I know some of them talked about, uh, breaking buildings and things of that nature. But what I simply said to them, because I, I agree with them, uh, is that we need, uh, we, we needed to re-establish kind of the, the, the goals and priorities of the BSC, the Building Standards Commission. And we also needed to have, uh, the judges in town work with us, because if you have a lot of different changes and you don't have that cooperation and they don't see current direction we're going in and they're not, not, uh, making the right decisions that support the, the kind of priorities and strategies that the council w- want to engage in, you won't have those results. And I say that, not, not, uh, say any derogatory comments about the judicial system. I'm simply saying there's different parts of, of the state that, that rule on different ordinances, uh, in, in just different ways. And, and I know at the last city I was at, we, we, we were fifty-fifty in terms of the type of decisions that we made until we really had a strong messaging program with the city and we got them to see kind of what we were doing. And so when we started addressing some of the dilapidated structures that we had in that particular city and the problems we had with apartment complexes, uh, we, we had a, two of them, I think, that we closed down. Once we had that message, a strong message come across, then the ordinance really worked and the judges really worked with us because they knew what we were doing. I use that only as an example. Uh, several ordinances that I've talked about do address things and, and I've, and I've used this phrase, it's the power of the pen. And to your point, there's ways where you can have the power of the pen help, uh, police department exponentially. And we have not looked, uh, at law enforcement in isolation. I think that just the example that I shared with y'all, and then the ordinances that we've introduced that legal right now is reviewing and the police department is reviewing, because what I've said is these five or six ordinances that we did in another place doesn't necessarily mean it'll work here. So they've been working diligently with, with staff, uh, in order to make sure that it's something that the police department can do, and that we just don't throw something on them that's gonna be burdensome as opposed to something that's going to be a tool for them. So they've been working on that. And so it's not, I mean, I understand you said it's months, and you're right. I mean, I, I can say six and a half years, uh, that we've been, that I've been talking about that. So I think now the time is right. I think that timing wise, uh, it's ripe, not only just ripe, but ripe, R-I-P-E, to do something about this. And so I think the community is ready as well. So we're going to, uh, put the foot on the pedal and go as fast as we can, but we want to do it right. And we want to make sure the police department can execute on the types of ordinance we're talking about putting in. One, one case in point, an example that I can share with all of you is the beer runs that happen in convenience stores. So we had a convenience store ordinance in the last city that I was at because we had the same problem. And it was very simple things, like getting the product off the, off the, uh, off the windows. If you notice in convenience stores, how the product is all up on the windows. So when the officer drives by, they can't see somebody being, you know, you're sticking someone up. You can't see because all the product's on the window. So that's just one easy example. There's a lot of other examples, but that one is one that's very easy to understand and to visualize whenever it's described verbally. The other example is better lighting, you know, and, and I know some of the newer facilities, convenience stores has great lighting, but in the, the last city I was at, some of the lighting was really, really, uh, bad. So there, there's just a lot of things like that that you can place in an ordinance where you can fix issues that, that can help the police department. And again, use the power of the pen and not just adding more police officers and all these other programs that I've mentioned.
Thanks. And, and I appreciate, you know, sharing a little bit more. I'm, I'm wondering, again, you know, I applaud Representative Zaraga for putting this item down. Is there, is, I guess, for our city attorney, is there flexibility, rather than delete this item, that we can direct staff to come back with other ordinance and policy recommendations relating towards alcohol consumption and alcohol usage, um, within our city?
And, and Mayor Protem, just, just one quick comment on that. I've already stated that we're gonna come back with a comprehensive report. I think you can very easily, to your point, talk about how can y'all include the ordinances piece as well, and we're happy to do that.
I, I just, I, that, that's for our city attorney, because I, I, is there, is there an opinion from her? Because I don't want to come out of this and have it on the record that we're deleting an item relating towards excessive alcohol consumption.
Okay, just for the record, yes, sir.
I can't, I can't, I can't, even though we have that legal advice to delete this item, I can't be on the, I cannot be supportive of that.
I understand, but what I'm, but I'm saying...
What sort of proactive, from our city attorney, what sort of proactive, uh, um, suggestions do you have with the flexibility in this item that can direct city staff, if it isn't already being done, to, to, to come back with some of these, with some of these policy recommendations towards alcohol use and alcohol consumption within our city? Is there that flag?
Thank you, Representative Schwartzman. So I've been listening to the conversation that council has been having, and Mr. Gonzalez is correct, our office has been working with his office and several police officers in regards to addressing this issue. Uh, what I will tell you is, there's, as you say, Representative Schwartzman, various different ways or mechanisms or tools that we would be able to address this issue through zoning and planning. There's also additional coordination that will be needed from other departments to help us address this issue. You, council isn't, um, limited, right, in, in this discussion in making additional recommendations or requests of the city manager and myself to go back and address this issue. However, we are doing that. Uh, what, what I will tell you is, is my conversations with Representative Schwartzman, Representative Lizaraga, were focused in her neighborhood in regards to the Delta Center and some of the secondary effects that were taking place in her neighborhood. I wasn't aware of the situation at Fox Plaza, which appears to be, um, a business-related issue because of who's loitering in that area. But like Mr. Gonzalez said, there are different ways that we could address this issue. We're working through that. But if, if council feels inclined to give us additional direction, certainly that's within your authority. But if, if council feels inclined to give us additional direction, certainly that's within your authority.
Uh, Representative Lozarga, would you, would you entertain a motion if, if we made a, an item to direct city staff to, um, come back with, to come back and report to council with policy recommendations and to include, um, to at least include, um, ordinance changes relating towards alcohol usage and alcohol consumption within our city limits?
Yes, I would be fine with that. Um, I was just going to delete it because obviously I cannot move forward with this specific a- agenda item, but I'm open to that, Representative Schwartzman.
So I, I would like to make a motion for, um, city staff to report back to city council with policy recommendations, um, including, uh, updating ordinances or introducing new ordinances relating towards alcohol permits, alcohol usage and alcohol consumption within city limits. In the limits, within the city limits of El Paso, Texas.
Second.
Before we take a vote, uh, we have Representative Molinar.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So, um, I'm hearing different things here. However, having been a police officer a while, uh, you, the police department, and I know it's not just a police issue or enforcement type thing, but, um, if you have a bar near a residential area, you're going to have problems given. I believe it's the bar's owner responsibilities to take, uh, assertive action to prevent problems. And when there are problems, to identify those problems and to remedy or correct those problems. The bar manager, whoever's working on duty, has that same responsibility because their owner's giving them that responsibility. The Texas Alcohol and Beverage Commission works. I can tell you they will work, uh, jointly with any other law enforcement, uh, entity, organization, police department, whatever. And they can also hold an administrative review of that bar to find out what is happening and not happening, uh, things like that. So to me, before we start changing or creating new policy, new ordinances, we already have existing policies, we have existing ordinances, we have existing laws, I think that needs to be examined as well. It's not just, uh, hey, we need to get this going new. I think we already have something in the books that we need to start looking at and using, utilizing those tools that we have already. So, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Molinar. With that, Ms. Prine, we have a motion in a second.
Yes, Mayor Protem Schwartzman, will you please restate your motion, please?
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion to direct city staff, um, to return to city council with policy recommendations, um, to include the introduction of new ordinances or ordinance revisions relating towards, um, alcohol consumption, alcohol permits and alcohol usage within the city limits of El Paso, Texas.
Thank you. And that was seconded by Representative Anello. On that motion, Mayor Protem Schwartzman.
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Nay.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
No.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lozarga?
Aye.
And that motion passes with six affirmative votes. Representatives Molinar, Rodriguez voting nay, the remainder of co- council voting aye. The motion does carry. We now turn to page.
Ms. Prin-
Mayor, I do have a few more comments, if that's okay?
Before we do that, um, I do want to take a moment. Um, two years ago today at ten thirty-nine, the first nine-one-one call went out and it's ten thirty-nine right now. And I want to thank all our first responders that went out there and protected our community, not knowing what the call was about, except that, uh, there was an active shooter and they needed to protect all the citizens of El Paso. And I want to take this, uh, moment to thank all law enforcement in our community that were out there protecting us and all the firefighters and first responders, paramedics that were out there. And I, as I'm speaking, I, I pictured in my mind seeing those pictures of them being out there protecting us and being there. So I want to take a moment to just thank them and tell them that, um, I will, um, I always appreciate everything they do and may God bless every one of them. Thank you. That's from Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, first of all, thank you for that, Mayor. I appreciate that, that's, that's beautiful. What I was just going to add is, as I pointed out earlier, we're going to come back with a comprehensive report and then include all the things in the motion that was made. I also, uh, want to thank the council for the support of the budget. Whenever we've asked for the things that are necessary. The only reason I was able to, to be as broad and comprehensive in my response is because those are the kinds of things that we've been recommending and the council's been approving. I, I would like to add, if we carry this out in the manner in which it's been described, you will also get complaints on the other side. Uh, so I want to make sure that I just am advising that, that we need your support there too. Because when the police officers go out and they do their job and they go out and execute on what you just asked them to do, what you just asked us to put together, you're going to get, uh, probably complaints on the other end as well. And, and I've gotten those, those phone calls from you and from others whenever you do get those. So I just want to make sure that we know what we're walking into. Want to make sure that we can be as aggressive as we need to be in order to address these issues. But at the same time, there's, there's a lot of discretion, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, support that's needed in, in order to execute these properly. So, um, I just wanted to make that point. Uh, don't, don't want to, and I'll see some hands up. I, I don't want to go, uh, and debate the issue. I'm not debating it, I'm simply just pointing out that we will do this. Just want to make sure that we understand what we're asking for.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor. Mayor, may we go on to the next item?
Uh, we have, um, Mayor Protem.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify in terms of going and understanding about what, what we're going into and stuff. Again, I think that, that the intent and spirit of, of what we directed staff to look at in terms of this is not just necessarily approaching this from an angle of increased law enforcement or an angle of increased use of the police, but looking at ways that we can look into the future to try to avoid some of these issues when we're, we're clustering or incurred, you know, having alcohol, uh, serving establishments in different parts of our city. So again, that, that is, I think, a big part of the spirit of what we're looking at is not just necessarily looking just at our police and increased enforced, law enforcement, um, towards dealing with alcohol usage in our community. But what do we have from a policy and a planning perspective in terms of where we allow these establishments or how these establishments are, are coming up into our community? And I just, I wanted to, to be clear about that because you were talking about kind of, you know, what we might be hearing from different sides and everything like that. And I, I don't think, again, the, the spirit of what we just passed here was to ask for more police officers or more engagement with law enforcement, but to look at those other tools that we have in our planning and inspections department that we have in our city code that either exists or could exist into the future. Again, to sort of, to look into the future, what we can do to sort of limit and control some of these uses into the future, again, within, within the law.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And, uh, unless you guys want to revisit the item, uh, the item's been voted on already. So we'd have to, uh, make a motion to revisit the item or we need to move forward and recess to mass transit. Thank you. Ms. Prine?
Yes, may we have a motion to recess for the Mass Transit Department Board meeting?
Motion to recess.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to recess the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And the city council meeting is in recess at ten forty-four AM. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Mass Transit Department Board for Tuesday, August third, twenty-twenty-one. It is ten forty-four AM. Due to the pandemic, the Texas Governor has temporarily suspended specified provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act to allow video conference or telephonic meetings in order to avoid Congress at settings. Board Chair Lisa is present and presiding and we begin the meeting with roll call. Board Member Schwartzman?
Aye.
Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Here.
Molinar?
Present.
Salcido?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rivera?
Here.
Lozarga?
Present.
And we do have a quorum. We now go to call to the public. We did have Mr. Stephen Strummer signed up to speak. Mr. Strummer, are you in the queue, sir? Star six to unmute your telephone, Mr. Stephen Strummer? Mr. Stephen Strummer? Mr. Lisa, I don't see Mr. Strummer's phone number in the queue. So we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered by Mass Transit Department Board to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by board members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. The Mass Transit Department Board may however reconsider any item at any time during the meeting.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. On that motion, Board Member Schwartzman?
Aye.
Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Lozarga?
Aye.
Board Chair Lisa?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the regular agenda to item number five. This is a presentation and discussion on the fixed route performance indicators for the third quarter of FY twenty-twenty-one, period ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Um, Ellen Smythe, Managing Director of San Metro. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, the, the report as usual is the, the fixed route performance measures for the third quarter. And we compare this quarter with the last year's third quarter. So you can see, uh, the ridership in total for in thousands. For this year, it's two thousand six hundred and twenty-seven compared with seven thousand and ten last year. So you have to remember that for FY twenty-twenty, we did not shut down the routes until the end of March. And so we were, by the third quarter, we were only down for two months. Versus this year, at the end of the third quarter, we've been down our ridership for a full nine months. So that's a substantial differential between those two numbers that you see on your screen. Um, the same would be true for the next two items as well, the passengers per hour and the fare box recovery. Again, because, um, last year's comparison, we had only been down for two months. Um, and this year it's been the full nine months. You can see that our, we're, we're less than ten passengers per hour. And our fare box recovery ratio, that's the amount of money that, as a percentage of our total budget, that we're actually collecting from the passengers. So last year we were just under ten percent and this year we're below six and a half percent. The cost per trip, of course, goes up accordingly. You know, the more people who ride it at one time, the less it costs per person. And so the cost per trip this year is eleven dollars and sixty-four cents compared with five dollars and twenty cents last year. And of course, our dollar fifty full fare is, uh, set, it doesn't change. In terms of safety, our safety numbers are, are fairly good. Um, two point one five collisions per hundred thousand miles, um, which equals a, a worker's comp claim of one point seven. Um, and then our preventive maintenance is at ninety-seven point three percent. We have had a few vacancies, but we're continuing to fill those. We, we've had sixty-three road calls and our on-time performance satisfaction is right at ninety-two percent. Miss service, um, point one percent. And then our, our cleanings continue. Um, we are doing the detailed cleanings of our buses. And our passenger, our customer complaints for one hundred thousand passengers was, um, so small that it really didn't even record. And the last item, we are working continually to install new bus shelters at our bus stops. We have two thousand six hundred and sixteen bus stops and only five hundred and thirty-one of them have a shelter. So it's a, it's an ongoing annual program where we continue to install shelters, um, and improve the sidewalks at each of the, the bus stops. So we're, right now, we're up to five hundred and thirty-one, which is twenty percent of all our stops. And that's all I have for this presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Smythe. Representative Hernandez?
Thank you, Ellen. Um, just a point of clarification on your chart. Um, in the past, these, uh, these, um, uh, documents, performance measures would show goals. And so I'm not seeing them now. Can you ex, is that what the expected is or is that what you're, I mean, is that the goal or is that just the expected?
Yes. Um, let me see if I can go back to that other screen here. Well, whatever I did with it. Um, I don't know why I'm not seeing. But the goal was the, the other, um, other piece of that. There we are. Well, I totally left my computer, I apologize. Here it is. Share that screen. So, um, on the, this expected by the end of FY twenty-twenty-one are the goals, of course. I, I apologize, I didn't point that out.
No, no, that's perfectly fine. I just wanted to clarify, um, so this is what you are expecting for this fiscal year? And then, um, on the different columns, it's just how we're doing from September to present to May?
Right, so year-to-date is the first two columns and then the entire year for last year. And what we're expecting is the last column, our goal for this year. So it's quarter to quarter and actual year to what we expect for the year.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Hernandez. No other questions for Smythe, thank you.
Okay.
The next item is number six and this is a presentation and discussion on the paratransit lift performance indicators for the third quarter of FY twenty-twenty-one, period ending May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Good morning, everyone. Julio Perez with San Metro. This, these are the same numbers that we reported, um, uh, in terms of fixed route, meaning that we're reporting the same quarter, uh, Q three, um, of this year compared to the previous year. Um, the same expected means the goals. And with the difference that with the trips, that's, that varies from year to year in terms of ridership. Uh, but all of the remaining ones are actually, uh, written into the contract with NV Transportation. So those don't change from one year to the, to the next until the contract ends. And so as you can see, ridership, yeah, continues to be pretty low. Last year, or the pre-pandemic numbers were at over three hundred thousand trips. And I don't think we're going to reach, or barely reach, the one hundred and seventy thousand this year. We don't really see an improvement moving forward. I think overall, people are still kind of afraid to ride, um, until the pandemic is over. So, uh, in terms of collisions per a hundred thousand miles, we are hovering at around one point six, which is the equivalent of about four collisions per month, uh, which is pretty good. The same thing with incidents per a hundred thousand trips at, uh, point oh four. Uh, that usually corresponds to one incident per month. That relates to non-collision incidents, meaning like, uh, anything that happens on the bus that prevents us from continuing to move forward, uh, on that route. Uh, i.e., uh, an issue with the customer, uh, someone falls or something like that. Uh, preventive maintenance, we're hovering at around ninety-seven year-to-date. Uh, our goal is to be ninety-nine, uh, percent or a hundred. I think I did report last year that, um, uh, we were going to present a little bit of, of, you know, of a dip in numbers in terms of preventive maintenance and on-time performance because we were struggling, uh, in recruiting new drivers. And I think we see that, uh, this quarter. Uh, normally we're a little bit above ninety-five percent in preventive maintenance as well as our on-time performance is usually above ninety percent. Uh, it did dip, uh, but not as much as I thought or I feared. And I think it has to do mostly with NV taking some proactive steps in, and curtailing that. or mitigating it. Uh, they have added, uh, a lot of overtime to their drivers. They're, uh, recruiting some non-CDL drivers and, and then training them along the way to get their CDLs. They're adding additional trips to, um, uh, checker cam, taxi, which has helped a lot. And they're continuing to recruit as much as possible. I, I think they're getting more applications in now. So I'm really hoping that that was the bottom of, of the performance, uh, that we had. And, and moving forward, we're gonna see better numbers. So again, it was not as bad as I feared. Uh, for example, the on-time performance, uh, was at 86%. Overall, we're still above 90%, 91%, which is right at the, uh, uh, level where it, it prevents a lot of complaints to come in, and we've seen it. Even though the performance, uh, on-time performance did go down a little bit, uh, the customer complaints did not go up exponentially. Uh, so that continues to hover right around 7.5 for the quarter. Uh, customer service satisfaction continues to be pretty high. And, uh, our on-time or our dispatch response times and our call center response times are really hovering at around one minute, uh, by the time the person picks up the phone. So with that, I do also have Mr. Rafael Fernandez from NV, the general manager there, in case you have any questions, uh, for him.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Uh, there is no questions. Ms. Prine?
Yes, sir, that brings us to the end of the agenda, may we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the Mass Transit Department Board meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? And the Mass Transit Department Board meeting for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 is adjourned at 10:57 a.m. May we have a motion to reconvene the regular city council meeting?
Some move.
Some move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the meeting is back in session at 10:57 a.m. We're on page 19, item number 38, which was moved to the forefront. And this is a public hearing on an ordinance approving amendment number 20 to the project plan and reinvestment zone financing plan for tax increment reinvestment zone number five to allocate up to $100,000 of the tax increment reinvestment zone annual revenue to the downtown management district commercial facade improvement program.
Thank you, Laura. Next slide, please. My name is Medea Craigwell with Economic and International Development. Um, as Laura mentioned, this is the 20th amendment to the TERS number five. This is, item is tied to our strategic one number one, cultivating an environment conducive to strong, sustainable economic development. And the linkage to our strategic plan 1.7, identify and develop plans for areas of reinvestment and local partnership. Next slide, please. So tax increment reinvestment zone number five is known as our downtown TERS. It encompasses 288 acres in the footprint. Um, as a reminder, this is a, not a DMD program. This is a city program that is managed by the DMD by an interlocal agreement. On February 20th, I'm sorry, February of 2020, the council, uh, approved an increase of the allocation from 75,000 to 100,000. So this is a special request for an additional funding. On March 18th of 2021, the board of directors for the TERS V board unanimously, uh, recommended approval to allocate an additional $100,000 to the downtown management districts facade program. Um, despite the economic conditions, uh, they have seen a surge in the requests that they've received for, for these grants. So without this additional funding, uh, they may not be able to fund other deals that are in the pipeline, other requests. Next slide, please. This is a public hearing for the discussion and action of an ordinance approving the 20th, uh, amendment to the project and finance plan. And, uh, to allocate, again, $100,000 to the downtown management districts commercial facade program. Next slide, please. So what you'll see here is the budget impact that this will have if we allocate this $100,000. Uh, back in 2006, which is when this TERS was formed, the goal of forming TERS was to stimulate, uh, new private investment and create new housing, shopping, and enter, entertainment alternatives, which all have significantly increased the tax revenues for all taxing entities. Um, this has been, uh, over the past 13 years. So back in 2006, the taxable value for this TERS was $106 million. And in 2020, that grew to 360 million, so that is a 238% increase. And as you see here, uh, if we approve this $100,000 or council approves this $100,000, down below in red, it will have a nominal impact. Uh, as you can see, it would still leave a $1.7 million in the fund. Next slide, please. Um, and now, uh, we have Joe Gudnare from the downtown management district to give you an overview of the performance of the TERSs and, uh, to answer any questions.
Good morning. Joe Gudnare, Executive Director of the downtown management district. Thank you, Mayor, council reps, city staff. Uh, just a brief overview, this is actually a great story about our economic recovery from the pandemic. And so if you can show the next slide. Overall, the, the, this grant program is a joint program, like Medea said, that is managed by the DMD. Um, here are the grants that have been, been issued since 2011, when the DMD assumed management of the program. As you can see, they're spread out across the DMD boundaries as well as the TERS district boundaries. Next slide. And a little bit of, just a little bit of the history, again, we started management of this joint program in 2011, uh, which at that time, the program went under an overhaul as well, going from a maximum grant of 5,000 to the, what we currently experience of a $25,000 grant. In 2016, uh, the TERS and council recommend adding the signature signage and lighting program as a, as a grant that could be funded with these dollars. As well as the DMD also established two other grant programs. So in total now, uh, downtown property owners, uh, have access to about four programs, depending on where their property is located. Next slide, please. Here's how the funds have come in and out of this grant program. And I'll point you down to the 2020 line towards the bottom. This has been a record-breaking year in terms of the quantity of grants that have been applied for, as well as the, the amount of funds being requested. So when I say this is a success story, this is a great rebound from the previous year where we only issued $53,000 worth of grants. But then also this year being, uh, $72,000 over our previous highest amount. So again, without the, uh, without any additional funds going into the program at this time, uh, we'll be sitting basically at a zero balance, uh, and, and not be approving any grants until additional funds come in, in October from the DMD. And then as part of the, uh, the city's TERS regular contribution in January. Next slide. And when I talk about the, uh, when we talk about a return on investment, especially when we're talking about facade grant programs, and Medea mentioned it, how, how property values have increased dramatically within the TERS. This is, this is an indicator of how these grants have paid off in terms of investment in our, uh, partnering with the private sector, investing in our properties and seeing a return on that investment. So on the grant projects alone, we've seen, uh, total property value increase by 59% from the base year of when those grants, uh, were received. So you're seeing about an increase of $29 for every TERS dollar invested. Next slide, next slide. This is the record year, uh, for us. You can see we have a total of 18 projects between, uh, the, the various grant programs and a total of $329,000. That's including the DMD man, only programs. And you can see on that chart below how, where we are at compared to previous years, uh, and then, and, and the record that year that we're having today. Next slide. And like I, like I indicated on that one, uh, slide with the, uh, with the current balance, you know, we've, we've granted all the funds that are currently available. Uh, while we do have funds coming in October and, and in January through regular commitments, um, there is still a need for additional funds as soon as possible. These are all, these are all property owners who we've talked to, uh, discussed grant opportunities with them. And in some cases, we've even pre-approved to when funding is available for them. So as you can see, we've hit our record numbers, but we're still a lot of interest, which is, which bodes well for the, the recovery of our downtown and the future of our downtown. So, uh, with nothing else to add, I would just greatly appreciate your support of this program. I appreciate the TERS board's support of this program. And, uh, can I answer any questions?
Thank you. We have, um, Representative Liz Araga?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Joe, for being here. I think Joe summed it up. This is just a great program and I want to do whatever we can to help our downtown businesses to thrive. So I would urge my colleagues to support this item. Thank you. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second, Ms. Prine?
Yes, sir, there is a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on item number 38. On that motion, Mayor Protem Shortby?
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Hernandez.
Molinar?
Yes.
Molinar, aye.
Salcido?
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Rodri.
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. We now return to page 11, to the operational focus updates. Item number 27 is a comprehensive update of the public safety bond program.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Jerry Demuro, Assistant Director of Capitol Improvement. We're gonna...
Good morning.
Present on the status of the public safety bond program as, as it goes. So, the next slide, please. So the presentation outline, we'll do a bond funding overview as we normally do and then program status. Next slide, please. So as you all know, the program elements, uh, there was a $413 million bond passed. It was for new public facilities, to put police and fire resources in growing areas, perform major maintenance and renovation of aging facilities, improve working conditions for city employees, and create a joint fire department, police department, training academy to accommodate future classes and improve training efficiencies. Next slide, please. So for the police department, the projects were the East Side Regional Command Center, the Public Safety Training Academy, police headquarters, a new central regional command, renovation of four regional command centers, and fleet replacement. Next slide, please. This is the spending rollout post-COVID. You see that the bulk of the spending is, is occurring through 2025 with some police facilities scheduled, and that would be the, the renovations in 2026 and 2027. Next slide, please. For the fire department, we have a new station 36, which is located on the west side. We have a new station 38, which is located on the same campus as the East Side Regional Command Center. We have a special team station, which consolidates the functions that are now housed in fire stations one, nine, and 11. We have a new station 40, that, the location has not yet been determined. We have a public safety training and facility and logistics center, a new fire department headquarters, and station renovations and vehicle replacement. Next slide, please. And this is the rollout for the, the fire department activities. For the renovations, we, we have completed all the building assessments and prioritized what needs to be done when, and that program extends out through 2028. Next slide, please. So here's where we are on the police. East Side Regional Command, uh, Center. Uh, the design's been completed. We are negotiating a guaranteed maximum price with the construction manager at risk contractor, and construction will begin this fall. The Central Regional Command Center property acquisition is ongoing and the architect contract has been awarded. Design will be initiated this summer to be completed in the summer of '22, and construction to begin in the winter of '22 and completed in the spring of '24. Police headquarters, this facility is to be located at the COIN site. The project is being completed using a design-build-delivery strategy. We've selected that strategy to minimize the risk to the city and have the relationship for issues between the designer and the constructor settled between the designer and the constructor. The, uh, police academy property acquisition has been completed. When I developed this slide, it had not yet been completed, but it has been completed. We are also doing this project as a design-build strategy. The owner's rep contract has been awarded and the design builder will be onboard. Sorry. The design, the design builder will be onboard, um, by the summer of 2022. The central command center, um, or the, uh, command center renovations will take place follow, will, will initiate following the, uh, uh, completion and occupation of the East Side Regional Command Center. Uh, the intent is to, once the East Side Regional Command Center is, is occupiable, that the Pebble Hills, uh, Command Center will move into the East Side Regional Command Center. When Pebble Hills has been completed, Mission Valley will move into Pebble Hills and it'll, it'll, uh, go forth with the west side and northeast after that. Next slide, please. This is the location of the East Side Regional Command Center. It is at Tim Foster and Pebble Hills Boulevard. It's an approximate 10-acre city-owned parcel. Uh, Fire Station 38, as I mentioned, will be located on the same property. You can see that, uh, the yellow square is the property, Fire Station 38 is the blue square. The facility for the East Side Regional Command Center is approximately 42,000 square feet. Amenities include the gymnasium, outdoor running track, fueling stations, light vehicle maintenance facility, secure fleet, and personal vehicle parking, suspect processing, interrogation, and detention, reporting areas, administrative offices, security and communication system, and a public art memorializing fallen officers. Next slide, please. These are some renderings of the East Side Regional Command Center. Um, as I mentioned, it is a 42,000 square feet building. The decision was, was made by the architects to bring as much natural light into the facility as possible. You see a nighttime or evening, evening view. And then beside that is a daytime view, and then you see one side of the building and in the back of the building where there is a plan to be a patio and a basketball court. Next slide, please. Uh, the design is a sustainable design. You see the, here you have the, the site plan and the floor plan. Uh, the design meets Green Globe II requirements. Green Globe, as you know, is a practical approach to green building. Two Globes indicates a significant achievement in resource efficiency, reducing environmental impacts, and improving occupant wellness. It's an online assessment protocol and rating systems and guidance, uh, for green building design. Next slide, please. These are, these are the categories that are rated for clean, green growth, uh, Green Globe ratings, project management, the efficient use of the site, uh, and landscaping, et cetera, energy, water efficiency, materials, both indoor and outdoor, and the indoor environment. Next slide, please. The sustainable building elements include a, a solar canopy over a portion of the secured parking area, low-flow bathroom and locker room fixtures, natural lighting throughout the building, low VOC building materials, onsite stormwater management, indoor/outdoor recreational amenities, zirescapes, native planting and drip irrigation, energy-efficient HVAC and appliances, LED lighting, energy-efficient building envelope and reflective roofing system, and energy recovery, centralized energy management system, and air purification system, among, among others. Next slide, please. Moving to the Joint Public Safety Academy, its location is approximately at Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and Officer Andrew Barcena Drive. It is in District Four. The total budget is a sum, summary, summary of what is contributed by the police, the fire department for the academy and logistics center, and the fire department headquarters. Total budget is 79.1 million. All of the facilities will be located on the same campus at Martin Luther King Junior and Officer Andrew Barcena. It too, as I mentioned, will be a design build. Next slide, please. So this is the location of the property. As you can see, you have Officer Andrew Barcena Drive to the left, Martin Luther King Boulevard at the bottom. Uh, the, uh, intent is to, and, um, we identified and evaluated a number of properties. We selected the property because it offers significant opportunity to conserve open space while ensuring trail amenities are not impacted. It's accessible from major transportation thoroughfares. It has available utility and stormwater infrastructure, which reduces construction costs. And it, it was held in the EP water inventory. As I mentioned, the acquisition has been completed. It allows the transfer for city use at 25% of the appraised value. Next slide, please. What is intended is we, for, for the proposed academy, we will acquire 300 acres. We only need about 100 acres, maybe less than 100 acres. So the overall academy will have significant buffering from the surrounding land uses. In addition, as part of the agreement with, with El Paso Water, they are willing to dedicate the surrounding property, which is approximately 1,200 acres, as open space in perpetuity. And as I believe it's been discussed in front of council before, of the intent to acquire... And as I believe it's been discussed in front of council before, of the intent to acquire a conservation easement for that space. So, for the price of three hundred acres, we are getting basically twelve hundred acres worth of dedicated open space. The academy, the parking area for the academy will be used by trails and other recreational uses during non-business hours. The location offers some security presence near the trail, and we're using quality-of-life and public safety bond money to maximize the open space purchase and potentially improve the road to the roundhouse. Next slide. This is the location of the parcel in relation to the Lazy Cow Trailhead and the Roundhouse Trailhead. Next slide, please. These are academy amenities. These are sample diagrams. The new facility will be designed to complement the open space and also have the contextual, architectural to blend in and complement the Franklin Mountains. But some of the academy amenities are fire training props, an indoor shooting range, swift water rescue pool, classrooms, an auditorium, fitness gym, a simulation room, police tactical training, a mock courtroom, emergency vehicle training area, and the academy, as I mentioned, will be co-located with the Fire Department Headquarters and the Fire Vehicle Maintenance and Logistics Center. Next slide, please. These are example police training academy, an indoor firing range, the emergency vehicle training facility, the Hogan's Alley, which is basically a mock-up of a city street where officers can practice various maneuvers needed in the event of crime in buildings, to be able to learn ways to enter and exit and protect themselves, as well as occupants of buildings. And of course, the swift water pool. Next slide, please. These are example fire training props. You see, sometimes you will see automobiles brought in and practicing using the Jaws of Life. Sometimes there's mock-ups of automobiles in which fires are lit. And then you have what they call a burn building, which is a building, which is basically not really flammable, but it has a number of entrances and landings and balconies, so that the firefighters can be trained on all ways of entering and exiting the building. I should mention that the fires that are lit as part of this, as part of training, are fueled by propane, so you will not see massive black clouds of smoke on the horizon or emanating from the facility. Next slide, please. So our project schedule for the academy, as I mentioned, we have acquired the property. We're beginning, we have begun programming with the owner's representative, who is preparing the design-build documents for us, and we should have design builder selection by summer of next year, and design and construction starting in July of twenty-two through January of twenty-four. Next slide, please. As far as the fire program, we have a new Fire Station Thirty-Six. The bid's open for this Fire Station on July twenty-eighth. Construction will begin this fall and be completed in early twenty-three. And what you see at the top of the screen is the rendering of the Fire Station Thirty-Six. Fire Station Thirty-Eight, architect selection has been completed. It is the same architect as Fire Station Thirty-Six, so we're recognizing cost and experience efficiencies by using the same architect. And the design is to begin in the summer of twenty-twenty-one and completed by the spring of twenty-twenty-two. I will note that the selection process for Fire Station Thirty-Eight was competitive. It was not that we went directly with the consultant that we have doing Fire Station Thirty-Six. It was competitive amongst a number of other local teams. We have the special teams Fire Station. The property has been selected. It will be located at the Tillman Building Site. The Tillman Building will be demolished. The architect selection will be completed, and designs to begin in the summer of twenty-one, completed in twenty-two, with construction in early twenty-three and completion by twenty-five. Fire Station Forty, that'll be cited and designed and constructed between twenty-twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-nine. Next slide, please. So Fire Station Thirty-Six is located off of Restler, North Restler Drive on the West Side, adjacent to the Providence Hospital Trans Mountain Campus. Its total budget is eleven point three million. Next slide. And that includes equipment. These were some initial drawings, trying to scope out the project. On the left-hand side of the colored drawing, it is faced toward Restler. And the other side, you can see how the site plan came together. It is accessible from Restler with secure parking, the two-story building in and of itself, community room, and other amenities, and that it will egress via the hospital drive. Next slide, please. These are some renderings of the front of the building and the side of the building. Again, we selected architectural materials and finishes to complement the mountain, but also there's a covenant on this property that the hospital would have to approve architectural, had architectural control. So we worked very hard with the hospital to match the type of materials that were used in the construction of the hospital. And you can see to your right the comparison between Fire Station Thirty-Six and the hospital. Next slide, please. These are some of the design features. It's apparently twelve hundred square feet, approximately twelve hundred square feet. There is a community room. There's a three apparatus base. It's designed with firefighter health and safety in mind, with the segregation of the hot zone, is where they, when they come back to the fire, from a fire, so that they can disrobe from their equipment, and it stays in a hot zone. There is a warm zone where they transition into other clothing and uniforms. And then there's the cold zone, which is the living area. You don't want to mix the hot, warm, and cold zones. It has indoor and outdoor recreation space, and it, too, meets Green Globe II requirements. Next slide. So here's some of the sustainable elements, locally sourced exterior finishes. Similar to the East Side Regional Command Center, it has the low-flow fixtures, natural lighting throughout, low VOC building materials, onsite stormwater management, indoor/outdoor recreation, zero escape, native plantings, energy-efficient HVAC and appliances, energy-efficient building envelope, reflective roof coating, energy recovery. One of the things that is unique to this station is we're putting in a type of lighting that is designed to kill, like, staff infections from the staff germ. And we put that in the areas of the kitchen, the workout rooms, and the showers, and it will reduce tremendously the staff infections that are often encountered in facilities like fire stations. It is solar-ready, and we are exploring a PPA to put solar panels on the rooftop or somewhere on the property. And it has a large apparatus bay air circulation fan, which helps distribute and make for efficient cooling and heating. Next slide, please. So this is the progress to date on other facilities. The headquarters, again, the property's been acquired. It'll be at the academy campus. The Public Safety Training Facility, again, property's been acquired. And finally, the station renovations. I mentioned the building assessments have been completed. We've initiated the first five stations, Station Ten, Nineteen, Twenty-One, Twenty-Five, and Twenty-Six. We anticipate going into construction this winter, and we're working closely with the Fire Department to coordinate the logistics of having firefighters vacate stations while we are renovating them and be transferred to other stations. So, designs for the next five stations will begin this fall, and I can show you what those are in a couple slides. Next slide, please. So, last year, at the request of the Fire Department, we performed renovations at Stations Five and Thirty-Seven. Their vehicle exhaust system in the bays was a bay-wide system, which proved to be inefficient, compromising the health and safety of the firefighters. So we upgraded the exhaust system to the direct capture system, which you see in all the other fire stations. Station Ten, the work that's being done will be replacing the concrete apparatus bay in the parkway, landscaping, interior renovations to include LED lighting, new restrooms, kitchen, living quarters, finishes, and improving the privacy and functionality of the locker room. Station Nineteen, we're adding, believe it or not, a fire suppression system and smoke and CO2 alarms, landscaping improvement, painting, new exterior, energy-efficient windows, flooring, furniture, kitchen cabinets, countertops, and energy-efficient lighting. As far as Station Twenty, we're converting an existing unenclosed emergency response vehicle bay to a larger enclosed bay for a large fire apparatus that would not fit in the existing bays of the station. Additional minor renovations will be considered for that station in the future. Next slide, please. So here you see Fire Station Twenty on the left, that bay where the vehicle is parked within, that's open, that is being converted into a closed bay. In the middle slide, you see some of the exhaust network, exhaust system network piping. And then for Fire Station Twenty-Six, I mentioned we're doing windows, HVAC, and finishes upgrades. Next slide. So at Station Twenty-One, we are also replacing the apparatus apron, resurfacing the staff parking lot, installing secure parking, a twenty-four-hour generator, renovating the interior like the others to include kitchen, living areas, restrooms, dispatch office, and creating, remodeling women's sleeping quarters so that decontamination extractor and bunker gear can be isolated, creating the hot, the warm, and the cold zones. Station Twenty-Five, we're replacing the roof, installing fire alarm and fire suppression systems, we're upgrading the electrical system, the doors, the finishes, the counters, cabinetry, and lighting, repainting the exterior, and demolishing and installing concrete driveways. And at Station Twenty-Six, replacing exterior windows, upgrading to LED lighting, upgrading interior finishes, new HVAC, and replacement of the asphaltic driveways and parking areas. Next slide. So as I mentioned, Station Twenty-One, we are replacing the ingress egress drive, which you see on the left. The central fire station, this will be relocated to the special unit station, along with the functions of Fire Stations Nine and Eleven. Following the, or at the initiation of construction of the special unit station at the adjacent Tillman Building, this building will be demolished and repurposed for structured parking to accommodate the occupants of the Central Regional Command Center, the current Central Regional Command Center, and the firefighters, as well as the public. Next slide, please. New fire facilities, I mentioned the headquarters. So that is in programming. The academy, that is also in programming. And the special units, the special unit station, it is currently undergoing design. Next slide. Future projects, I mentioned Station Thirty-Eight, that is just beginning design. Station Forty will be determined in the future. And station renovations, they are being completed citywide. As I mentioned, the stations we're doing in FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, next up is Fire Station Three, Fifteen, Eighteen, Twenty-Two, and Twenty-Four. And then we'll program the remaining stations for FY twenty-four to twenty-eight. We want to make sure we prioritize the needs of the Fire Department, which may change between now and twenty-twenty-four. There may be something else that may be desired, or there may be some building functions that are no longer usable in their current state. Next slide, please. And that is my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, we have, let me get them in the right order for you. We have Representatives Rodriguez, followed by Representative Molinar, followed by Representative Representative Hernandez, and Mayor Potem. Representative Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, really informative presentation. I'm just curious, would we be able to add to the program for the Training Academy, the Safe Cities for Kids program? I know we already have, in the presentation, you showed that there's going to be like mock-up facades to show for training. Can we do that so that we could, I don't know, make it for the kids? Have you heard of that program, the Safe Cities for Kids?
I'm not familiar with that program, but I'm sure with the actual programming, that would be up to the Police Department and the Fire Department to work that in as part of their community involvement initiatives.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that would be a really good idea, to invite families in El Paso to see the training that police officers and firefighters are doing, also to ride their bikes in that fake mock-up neighborhood, and then, you know, they can also learn about safe cities. So I'll just go ahead and, I don't know, our city manager would be able to answer that question?
Answer the question if they're included in the plan?
If we could include it, yes.
As far as, if the quote comes in less than what it was anticipated, then it potentially be added, but it would probably be something that'd be a standalone added to another bond issuance that the citizens would have to vote on. If it's, because the one you're describing, I know we had a small version of that in the last city I had. I know that there's some other cities that I've seen in the same area where I used to manage, and they can be extremely impressive, and you're right, it's very interactive, and something in which can really benefit a community, especially the young kids, and it could also be something that could fall in line with what general members of council speak about with regard to having the officers look more friendly, or have law enforcement be more seen as a positive. And so that is something that we could consider in the future, but I don't know that we would have enough savings to be able to do it with this package. It would have to probably be a standalone.
Okay. And thank you. And then also, my final question is, I know that on the New East Side Regional Command Center is going to be basketball courts. Are those going to be open to the public, or is that strictly just for police officers?
That is strictly for police officers. That area, the building is a secure structure, so that secure structure and secure parking, access to that back of the building, public access for the back of the building will not be available because of security concerns.
Okay. Thank you, that is it.
Thank you, Representative Rodriguez. Representative Molinar, followed by Representative Hernandez. Representative Molinar.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Demuro, thank you very much for that thorough presentation. You don't need to go back to any slide, but do you, or do we already have the concrete plans in place by any chance for the primary or the main entrance and exit for the Joint Fire and Police Academy? Will that be around, through Martin Luther King?
Yes, we're envisioning access from Martin Luther King. We don't have anything in place there now. It is vacant space right now.
Okay. I have received some concerns that not to put a main entrance on Officer Andrew Barcena. And I tend to agree with that. However, I think in foot planning, you should have probably an alternate, probably not necessarily used all the time, but just as an alternate, but the primary, the main, being Martin Luther King. Thank you very much, sir.
We will factor that into our design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Molinar. Representative Hernandez, followed by Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Demuro, you had mentioned in your presentation that it's like statements about things to be considered in the future. And so I haven't done a thorough review on what was originally proposed in the bond package, and then what's being presented today. Are there any discrepancies, or is there anything that's being taken off the table that was originally proposed to the public?
There is nothing that's being taken off the table. That statement was made with regard to renovations. There was no specific scope of work for renovations in the bond, in the bond election. It was more that the facilities would be renovated. And I made that statement because between now and twenty-twenty-four, there may be some pressing needs of some of the fire stations that aren't being renovated upfront, that overweigh what we discovered in the building assessment.
Okay, then, all of the fire stations and command centers will have some form of renovations or improvements?
No, ma'am. Fire Station Twelve, Fire Station One, Nine, and Eleven will not be improved because their functions are being moved to other stations. There will be a new Fire Station Twelve, which is outside of the bond program, located on the Lower William Beaumont property, once we get the lease agreement hammered out. And then the Central Command, the Downtown Central Command, will not be renovated. There was only bond money for renovations of four Central, four Command Centers, and that was Pebble Hills, Mission Valley, Northeast, and West Side.
Okay, so I just want to confirm and just be clear that what we propose to the public is what's being proposed today in the rollout.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, now, one of the other concerns is that the fire stations do not, some of them do not have facilities for women. Will all of the stations be upgraded so that there are facilities for women?
Our designs are incorporating facilities for women. Yes, ma'am.
And then the fire stations that do not have facilities for women, are they being renovated to add those stations for women?
We haven't planned out renovations of all the stations as of yet, but the stations that are in renovation, or in design, I can tell you, yes, they will include facilities for women.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to double-check on that. And then finally, when there's going to be an action to demolish a public building, I really think that this council needs to have a thorough briefing as to why a demolish of a public building has to take place. And it could be a hundred percent merit, it could be economic reasons, but I don't feel comfortable it could be economic reasons, but I don't feel comfortable with you all just telling council that you're going to demolish, can, can at some point you all come back to council to elaborate and to brief as to the need of demolishing public places for growth of future, expansion of future buildings? I just want to make sure that it's not, we're not being told, and that these actions are being supported by your council.
Okay, Representative, and I'm just saying, I'm a big city engineer, that's definitely a fair comment, and we're starting to come back, and the, the planning, as you know, we've been working on the central combined facilities for the fire department. It's always been envisioned that we would increase the campus where Fire Station One is, but that's certainly a fair, fair statement and fair comment, and we'll be back to share with you the plan for that, where we include the, what's being planned for the demolition of the Tillman Building that's in our downtown area.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Representative Hernandez, Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again for this great presentation, a lot of, a lot of great projects that voters saw the need to approve, and we have a fiduciary and moral responsibility to see these projects through for our community, who have overwhelmingly approved this bond initiative to invest in our community, to keep our community safe, and to invest in our police and fire departments. I do have a couple of questions relating towards this project. One of the site, one of the biggest, biggest news from this is the final site location for the police, the new police headquarters. Do you have a map or a site map that shows the exact location of where the police department is going, the police headquarters is going to be situated on the Cohen site?
Jerry, let me address this question. Mayor Potem, the, the site, as you know, we've, we've done a big public outreach effort for the Cohen Entertainment District development, and we continue to have discussions. We're scheduled to meet with a developer here in the middle of August for the balance of the property, and part of that development, and what we've been, what our plan is, is to really work with a developer to really site the facility in a way that complements the Entertainment District. What's, with the police department headquarters being located at the Cohen site, we're leveraging the public investment as part of this development to really entice and provide the daytime population to support the entertainment, food and beverage offerings that are planned at this, at this location. So we don't have, aside from the master plan that's been developed through the public process, that's where we're, that's our starting point for this election of the site for the actual police department headquarters as to how it's being, being situated. Would you anticipate that to be towards the back in a way that would not detract the mountain views for the proposed development that's been master planned in the area? But that's, that's kind of, that's what the update that I have for you today on that.
Because I know that, that one of the things we were looking at Cohen State was make the area walkable to look at having parking spaces, and I would anticipate that, you know, the function and use from the PD department would be of utmost importance, but also that the design of the, the police headquarters also, would also reflect new urbanist principles as well as smart growth principles in terms of as it relates towards the rest of that, and I think done right, it can also be a very forward-facing facility as well towards the public, who we know, you know, loves and respects our police department, so I think that there's great opportunities for synergy with that as well, you bringing this up with the Cohen EP thing here.
Yes, yeah, it's just, and this is in order, but the CohenEP.com app has all the, all the master plan divisioning book. Yeah, let me just pull it up, if you give me one second, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So when you look at the site plan and the various opportunities that we have for the, this is the water park that's already been constructed, and so when you look at fourteen office spaces, parking areas are anticipated to be towards the back, as well as this fifteen for future use, and so that's what we're envisioning, the police department headquarters, as the opportunity for us to, to really provide the daytime population, obviously in conjunction with the community college that's right to the south of this development. So that's what we're, we're planning to, to develop this site, again, working in conjunction with a developer that, that would develop the balance of the Entertainment District, not obstructing the mountain views in this location.
Okay, would, this area currently has a TERS on it, if I recall correct?
That's correct, sir.
Would these TERS funds be used to help with the maintenance and operation of the police department moving forward?
That's certainly an eligible expenditure. The TERS funds are, are available for public improvements and, and maintenance of those facilities as well.
Okay, so that helps to understand a little bit more about the site map location with that. Thank you for that, and it seems like it's a good opportunity for synergy with this, and also having the TERS funds, being able to deal with some of those maintenance operation costs perhaps in the future as well. Just wanted to chime in about the police department and joint PD, Fire Department Training Facility as well. I do think that, to Representative Molinar's point, we do need to be sensitive to the residents that are in that area, even though most of the facilities are indoors for this training facility. I can, I can speak, and I'm sure Representative Vanello can speak, that with the current PD Training Facility, Training Academy, we do hear from residents dealing with, with concerns of noise and activities and that sort of thing with the current facility off of Scenic Drive. So I just would say that it's important to look at having a buffer from the, from the established residential neighborhood in that area, and I think, again, looking at the design, having design that can really incorporate and engage the open space while being very respectful to the open space that we're working to preserve as well, I think is certainly a possibility. So I do think it's important to look at opportunities to have that buffer from the residential neighborhood as well. One of the questions that I had again was, Station twenty-seven, that's Yoho de Agua, that is a facility that is, that is relatively new, I mean, it was built about twenty-so years ago. Is there a remote idea or timeline about when some of those station improvements would occur?
What we've done is we've prioritized the first two years of the renovations, and then we'll, as, as we're moving along, we will, we will prioritize the, the balance, but we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves in identifying what, what happens where, but in general, the newest stations would be renovated last, so.
But there will be renovations to Station twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
Okay, one of the questions I had relating to the newest station yet to be built, but built soon, is Station Thirty-Six. I did have an opportunity to have a, a site visit where that is at the Trans Mountain, right by the Trans Mountain Hospital and Wrestler, very exciting project. I think it's a great site to do that, very excited too that there's going to be a, a community, a sort of open space, it'll be open towards the community for different community meetings or, or arrangements, and so I think that's really great, and something that'll be utilized in that part of the district. I did have one question relating to the sleeping quarters and that. The concept for that is going to be bedrooms or a sort of open, sort of sleeping arrangement? Like a dorms, open floor dorms, I don't know what the official term is.
The fire department prefers open dorms over individual bedrooms.
Okay, okay. Will those open dorms be splits for male and female facilities, amenities, and sleeping arrangements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Also, another question I have relating to sort of being discussed a couple of times was, there's this talk about, I guess it's the Green Globes certification? So this is the first that I've heard of it, maybe it's something that's very established within sort of green development, but can you explain a little bit more about Green Globes and how it compares and contrasts to LED certification, which is something that we've heard much more about in terms of, of green building initiatives and sustainable and resilient building design?
So, under ordinance, the buildings have to be designed to either meet LEED Silver or Green Globes Two, which is two globes. There, there's very similar systems in terms of the desire to use clean build, green building techniques such as recycling of construction materials, minimizing site impacts, and, and the way Green Globes works is more of on a holistic approach than LEED. LEED, it's all about getting points. So for example, I think I met with you and we talked about, at East Side Regional Command Center, the architect got points for a solar water heater. The solar water heater was forty, was forty gallons, and it cost fifteen thousand dollars. You know, it's, it's not worth getting points to spend, you know, fifteen times what you can get with a, with a regular water heater. So it is a very well-established program, it's less about the points and more about creating a, a facility that is, that is energy efficient, water efficiency, the health and welfare of the occupants, you know, things like the natural light, it is a big thing with. Yes, and, and other energy techniques, but it is, it's, it's well-established, and it is within our ordinance to go Green Globes, and frankly, most of our architects prefer to do Green Globes over LEED because LEED is, is more about counting the number of points you have.
Okay, that helps, that's the difference there, sir. Yeah, I think it's great opportunities for these different, different sort of building initiatives. I know, for example, with the Joint Police and, and Fire Department Training Facility, probably with the orientation of the, of the buildings, there's probably great opportunities for passive solar in terms of how the sort of light hits and can cut down on, on cooling and heating costs, just based upon just the orientation of the buildings and the roof. So, really exciting projects as well, and I appreciate you personally helping to, to help me understand Station Thirty-Six a little bit more, and to those folks in our fire departments and staff for, for pushing these projects forward as well as our police department, so, thank you again.
Thank you, Representative.
We couldn't do it without the support of the fire department and the police department. They've been very great to work with, identifying what their needs are, and we've been very accommodating to make sure that their needs, their needs are met and the facilities are functional for them, so that their jobs are a little easier.
Thank you for that. Representative Salcido, good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Mayor. So, it was no secret that District Five was the only district without a Regional Command Center. Seeing these projects moving forward is very exciting and is what El Paso needs. As I block walked in two thousand nineteen, the voters did share with me on how important the public safety was to them, and I didn't fall into deep tears. I worked hard to make sure District Five was not left out. I do want to thank the voters in voting for this bond and investing in our, our community, in the public safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on it. And with that, Ms. Prine?
Yes, sir, the next item is number twenty-eight, and this is the first reading of an ordinance. We have a motion on the introduction.
Motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to introduce item number twenty-eight. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number twenty-nine, this is discussion in action on the request that the city manager be authorized to sign agreement between the City of El Paso and the Revenue Markets, Inc., DBA TRMI Systems Integration, the sole source provider for the toll system maintenance and replacement parts.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-nine. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty is discussion in action on the request that the city manager be authorized to sign agreement between the City of El Paso and Teleflex LLC, the sole source provider for the Aero EZIO System.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-one is discussion in action on the request that the Director of Purchasing and Strategic Sourcing Department be authorized to issue a purchase order to Crime Gun Intelligence Technologies LLC, the sole source for Firefly LE2 sensors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-one. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-two is discussion in action on the request that the city manager be authorized to sign service agreements between the City of El Paso and Vigilant Solutions LLC, the sole source provider of license plate recognition data.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-two. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-three is discussion in action on the award of Solicitation twenty-twenty-one-dash- twelve-zero-two, Animal Holding Facility Two to Pride General Contractors LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-three. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-four is discussion in action on the award of Solicitation twenty-twenty-one-dash- twelve-thirty-two, Playa Drink Trail Phase Two Segment Two to Tao Industries, Inc., DBA Hawk Construction.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-four. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-five is discussion in action on the award of Solicitation twenty-twenty-one-dash- eleven-twenty-seven, Barricade Rental Services to Leedsman Construction DBA Traffic Control Specialist Sales and Rentals.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-five. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-six is discussion in action on the award of Solicitation twenty-twenty-one-dash- eleven-fifty-six, Grounds Maintenance City Turf Medians and Mowing to MG Evergreen LLC.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-six. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Aruga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-seven is a public hearing on an ordinance amending the ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of El Paso, Texas Water and Sewer Commercial Paper Note Series Eight, and approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to an existing credit agreement.
Move to approve?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-seven. There's no public. There's no public comment on that motion Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Vanello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Molinar.
Aye.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Liz Aruga.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty-nine is a public hearing on an ordinance of the City Council of City of El Paso, Texas, Designating a non-contiguous geographic area within the city as a reinvestment zone pursuant to Chapter three eleven of the Texas Tax Code to be known as Reinvestment Zone Number fourteen.
Thank you, good morning Mayor and Council. This is Kelly Kotlick, Economic Development Program Administrator. Please for IT, get the presentation hold up. Thank you RT. So as mentioned, item thirty-nine is the creation ordinance for the proposed TERS fourteen. Before I turn the presentation over to our consultant to cover the analysis and the projections for this proposed TERS, I want to go over how the plan for this TERS stems directly from the city's strategic plan. Through this TERS, we will be able to execute the long-term vision and goals laid out in that plan. The city's strategic plan outlines goal number one, to cultivate an environment conducive to strong, sustainable economic development with the sub-goal to stabilize and expand El Paso's tax base. This goal calls out specific areas primed for targeted development and redevelopment, of which the airport footprint is one. The portion of the airport's property that sits largely vacant represents a significant opportunity for the city to attract the type of companies in our target industries as have been identified in our Economic Development Regional Strategic Plan and the city's strategic three-eighty policy that was approved by City Council in January of this year. With easy access to three highways and proximity to the airport in Fort Bliss, the property within this TERS occupies a prime location for companies that are exploring opportunities to relocate or expand in El Paso. However, as we have seen over the years, as we have tried to bring companies here, there are significant hurdles to attracting companies to this portion of the airport's footprint, mainly the lack of infrastructure and the timeline it would take to build out the needed roads and utilities. As for this reason, we are bringing this TERS creation ordinance to you today. The airport TERS will enable us to proactively execute a development plan to attract the companies that we want in El Paso. Our strategy for TERS development takes a number of conditions into consideration with the goals of expanding our tax base and creating retaining jobs. We identify areas that are needing, in need of public infrastructure to encourage private development. The airport's approximately sixteen hundred acres of developable non-aviation land has proven to meet these criteria. Furthermore, as this property is ineligible for residential development per federal, federal regulations, the commercial and industrial development that is projected to occur here will provide relief to the residential taxpayer. Lastly, this development will attract businesses that offer high-paying jobs and careers, those companies that are in advanced logistics, defense and aerospace, and advanced manufacturing. And with that, I'd like to introduce and turn it over to Natalie Moore, Project Manager for David Pettit Economic Development, to deliver the rest of the presentation to you. Next slide Natalie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much Kelly, thank you City Council and Mayor for having me here today. As Kelly mentioned, my name is Natalie Moore. I'm with David Pettit Economic Development based out of Fort Worth and I'm here to present to you the creation ordinance for TERS number fourteen. And I have a short presentation, if I could go to the next slide please. And per statute, whenever you're presenting a creation ordinance, there is a requirement for there to be a public hearing which will occur after my presentation. It does need to cover the concept of, of, of the TERS and also details of the specific TERS. Next slide please. So tax increment financing is a tool that facilitates economic development within a tax increment reinvestment zone. So whenever we speak about TIFs, TIF is the tool, TERS is the actual district. It's governed by Texas Tax Code Chapter three eleven. Cities alone or in partnership with other taxing units can use this tool to pay for improvements within the zone with the idea being that it will attract new development, facilitate investment, and bring excitement and energy to a designated area. Tax, taxing entities contribute ad valorem taxes received from incremental value increases on property within the TERS. Sales tax can also be contributed. A TERS can pay for the cost of public works, public improvements, economic development programs, and other projects benefiting the zone. Next slide please. The creation process is governed by Chapter three eleven. It outlines the procedures for creating or amending a TERS. There are two main documents, the creation ordinance which is being considered by Council today and a TERS project and financing plan. The creation ordinance establishes four key elements, the boundary, the term, the TERS board, and the preliminary project and financing plan. The creation ordinance being presented to you today also sets the city participation. Upon TERS creation, the final project and financing plan is approved by the TERS board and then the City Council by separate ordinance. Next slide please. Here are the boundaries of TERS fourteen. You can see that it surrounds the El Paso International Airport. It's bounded on the southern side by Montana Avenue. To the west is Airport Road and to the north there's spur sixty or Liberty Expressway. Next slide please. TERS fourteen consists of approximately four thousand and forty-eight acres located wholly within the city limits of El Paso. It's adjacent to the El Paso International Airport as you saw on the map before and it's approximately four miles northeast of downtown El Paso. It has a thirty-five-year term which is scheduled to end on December thirty-first, twenty fifty-six with the final year's tax increment to be collected the following year. The city of El Paso will set, per the creation ordinance, fifty percent of the real property increment within the zone generated from the maintenance and operations portion of the city tax rate only. So that fifty percent only applies to the maintenance, MNO portion of the tax rate. And again, it's anything, any increment above and beyond the base year. And given that this creation ordinance is being considered in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one would be the base year. The purpose of this TERS is to encourage private development with an emphasis on industrial and commercial property as Kelly mentioned earlier that will yield additional tax revenue to all taxing jurisdictions. Next slide please. The proposed development, you can see here outlined in blue is the, is the TERS, the boundaries of the TERS. You can see outlined in different colors, there's five areas. Now this, these areas are, are wholly within the zone but does not encompass the entire zone. But given the size of the TERS, what we did at, at David Pettit Economic Development is we came up with projections as to which areas we believe will develop first. And area one you can see in blue, and those are the, that's the area. It's actually two different parcels. Those parcels, we worked with industrial developers to take a look at the TERS and say, what do we think will most likely occur here, what is this best suited for? Within those blue parcels in area one, our industry leaders told us that they believe that there could be up to seven industrial buildings within that area and come seeing about three million square feet of Class A industrial to be completed by twenty twenty-nine. And next slide please. This is somewhat hard to see but you can see that area one is outlined here, the different industrial buildings. There's also commercial and office. This area is zoned, the entire TERS is zoned mostly for manufacturing with portions of it being zoned commercial. And so that is what we programmed that would be developed throughout the life of the TERS. Next slide please. This is just the additional areas. So all in all, we anticipate that there will be up to twenty million square feet of commercial, light industrial and office space built within the zone and totaling an investment of approximately seven hundred and fifty million dollars of taxable value added within the TERS. Next slide please. So that seven hundred and fifty million, based on the current tax rate and based on the participation from the city at fifty percent of your MNO, that means that within the life, throughout the life of the TERS, approximately eighty-nine, just, just shy of eighty-nine million dollars of TERS revenue would be put into the TERS fund. And what you see here is a list of public improvements that the TERS funds could be spent on. And these are estimates based on what we anticipate the needs within the zone would be. You can see quite a bit of it is in street and intersection improvements. And savings from one line item may be applied to a cost increase in another line item. All of these project cost allocations will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis consistent with the categories listed above. It would be brought forward first to the TERS board and then City Council for consideration. So we always say it's a two mother may eyes. The money goes into the TERS fund and in order for it to be dispersed, it has to be approved first by the TERS board and then City Council, making sure that it aligns with the goals of the TERS. Next slide please. The net benefit. Total taxes generated would be over one point two billion dollars. Eighty-nine million of that would go into the TERS fund, leaving a total net benefit to the community dispersed throughout the different taxing entities of approximately one point one billion. Again, based on our projections of seven hundred and fifty million dollars worth of taxable value being added within the boundaries. Next slide please. So with that, the next steps are for City Council to consider the creation ordinance again after the public hearing. The creation ordinance being considered has five key elements, the boundary, the term, the board, the city participation, and then a preliminary project and financing plan. If it were to be approved today, the final project and financing plan would be brought forward to the TERS board at a later date and then City Council would need to approve it by a separate ordinance. And with that, I will take any questions.
We have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We, we would actually need to have the public hearing before the motion to approve.
This, you're correct, this is a public hearing.
Okay.
If anyone would like to speak on this item, you may do so now, star six. Seeing nobody come forward, that ends the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-nine. On that motion Mayor Protem Schwartzwein.
Yes.
Representative Vanello.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Molinar.
Nay.
Salcido.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
No.
Rivera.
Aye.
Liz Aruga.
Aye.
And the motion passes with six affirmative votes. Representatives Molinar Rodriguez voting nay, the remainder of council voting aye, the motion does pass. Mayor, may we go to call to the public at this time?
Please.
Thank you, the El Paso City Council is a local government body charged with serving all of the citizens of the city and the meetings must be focused on the meeting at charge. The City Council meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act. Public comment is an accommodation and not a requirement of City Council. All persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respectful to other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks against a person or group's character or integrity which are not pertinent to city business, nor may any member of the public use this form for political statements or campaigning. Please note that during call to the public, the City Council may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not on the agenda. However, council may propose that a topic commented on be posted on a future agenda. This afternoon, we have seven members of the public that signed up to speak. The first person is Ms. Barbara Valencia, her topic is El Paso Animal Services. Good afternoon Ms. Valencia, star six, please do unmute your telephone and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yes. I'm going to speak about El Paso Animal Services and the HOS plan, Humane and Animal Support Services that they have implemented. Nanook is now becoming a celebrity in our city. He is the abandoned husky that was caught on video. He has been seen on CNN, Fox News, and Inside Edition. He has been featured in Newsweek, People Magazine, and every news stations across the United States. News stations from around the world, including countries such as United Kingdom, France, Spain, Australia, and New Zealand, to name a few, have covered his story and the plight in El Paso when it comes to the treatment of the dogs and puppies by our city officials. The story of Nanook is bringing national and international awareness to the huge problem we have in El Paso, Texas, of the dogs and puppies being dumped around the city and in the outskirts of the desert. Since the implementation of the HOS plan at El Paso Animal Services, healthy lost and stray dogs and puppies have been denied intake as outlined by their policy. I am reading this straight from El Paso Animal Services' HOS policy. Intake of healthy strays and owner surrenders doesn't exist anymore. No kennel space to be used for rehoming stray and lost hold or intake. The public has been instructed by El Paso Animal Services not to intervene if they see a stray or lost dog and to leave the dogs and puppies on the street. If the finder of a lost or stray dog is unwilling or unable to take in and keep the dog or puppy they have found, they too are instructed to put the dog or puppy on the streets to fend for itself and hope the dog or puppy finds its way back home. Since the implementation of HOS, there has been and continues to be a huge uptick in dogs and puppies being dumped and abandoned. Local rescues like Positive Rescuers of El Paso, Huckleberry Hound Dog Rescue, Animal Rescue League of El Paso, West Texas Tales, and others have stepped up to the plate and have been taking in as many of these lost and now homeless dogs and puppies El Paso Animal Services have illegally abandoned. The local rescues have become overworked, burned out, frustrated, and financially strapped. Just like Luis Antonio Campos, the man who abandoned Nanook, who was criminally charged and arrested for animal cruelty, so should Ramon Herrera, their interim director of Animal Services. He too, along with the management at El Paso Animal Services, have been breaking the law and committing animal cruelty. Also making rounds across the United States is an open letter that was posted. I will read this open letter. It says, "Open Letter to Mayor Oscar Leiser, City Manager Tommy Gonzalez."
Thank you ma'am, you've reached the three-minute limit ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Ron Como, his topic is El Paso Animal Services' HOS program. Good afternoon sir, star six, do unmute your telephone. You have three minutes sir.
Good afternoon. I want to bring out a few things. The manager of Channel Seven said on the air that he found a dog and El Paso Animal Services was not interested in picking the dog up. I think that's pretty interesting because obviously we're having this conversation about shelter not picking up dogs. Now, I'm, I'm sure that the reasoning from Animal Services, because we've heard this so often, is the three-one-one operator didn't read the script correctly or there was confusion. This needs to come to an end, absolutely needs to come to an end. Now, as far as Ramon posting on Facebook, they saved a hundred thousand dogs since the implement of HOS. If you go through the live outcome for twenty twenty-one and add in the year of twenty twenty, the amount of, of strays or amount of dogs that went through our shelter that were saved was fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. Now to give you some outlook on that, in twenty nineteen, we saved twenty thousand eight hundred and fifteen in a year. Now, the other thing I'd like to bring to light is Mr. Herrera keeps saying his shelter is full. In twenty nineteen, the shelter, live intake, seven thousand five hundred and fifteen dogs, handled them and got them out. In twenty twenty-one, in the first six months, they live intake forty-five thousand sixty-one. There's a huge discrepancy on what's happening here. You know, if you look at the fourteen thousand dogs in a year and a half, or pets I should say, that they had live intake, and then look at twenty nineteen, they did twenty thousand eight fifteen and we keep hearing how great they're doing and how many lives they're saving. I would love to see these reports because these numbers came straight from Animal Services' reports. You know, what, what, what are we doing? You know, I mean, this is, this is insane. The other thing I'm looking at is their claimed live release rate. I'm looking at is their claimed live release rate at 86.18. When you look at, they only saved 45,000 out of 75,000. The actual number is about 60.5, unless you add in the ones that were killed. Yeah, they did leave the shelter, but they didn't leave the shelter on their own feet and out the front door. Live release rate is the dogs that go out, walk out, or get carried out alive. So I don't know where they're getting their figures. I mean, and again, if anybody would like to check this, look at your Animal Services reports. They're very simple, very easy to follow. But I really think we should concentrate on the fact that a general manager from Channel Seven was refused to take a dog from the shelter.
Thank you, Mr. Como. You've reached the three minutes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Luis Ruiz. Mr. Ruiz's topic is August 3, 2019 Memorial. Good afternoon, Mr. Ruiz. Star six, please, to unmute your telephone.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. You have three minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon, City Council. I want to thank God Almighty for the opportunity to address you today. My comments are meant to honor the memory of the lives lost two years ago this very tragic day. The problem of white supremacy and systemic racism was prevalent in El Paso before that tragic day two years ago when we lost those 23 beautiful souls to hate. Two years since, nothing has done to stop it. The city of El Paso's misguided economic development initiatives were doomed to fail from the very beginning. Despite this, City Council continues to dedicate enormous sums of money to projects that benefit a handful of people at the expense of the city's 88% Mexican-American population. The Glass Beach Study is the most blatant example of systemic racism that exists in post-civil rights America. The study found that we had to replace the image of dusty Mexicans with affluent whites, a vision that is more visible as the days pass. The negative image was spread around the country, an image that was rejected by site selectors. Since City Council voted to fund the Glass Beach Study, it has a duty to denounce the racist findings of the study. Furthermore, City Council is urged to demand a refund from Sanders and Wingo, the company behind the Glass Beach Study. And lastly, the city is urged to release the names of the 37 executives who participated, so taxpayers can see the extent of which special interests benefit from systemically racist projects. As far as economic development and tourism, the city would be wise to address the systemic racism issues that have been brought up. No one is going to want to visit the most racist city in America. Also, tourism efforts seem to be misguided in light of looming lockdown. Freeze on that. Hello?
Yes, sir. You have one minute and 10 seconds, sir.
I will be following up with an email. I have laid everything out on a website called EndWhitesupremacyNow.com. I am appalled, appalled by the lack of action of City Council. I want one of you, I'm begging one of you, to do the right thing, to get educated on the subject of the Glass Beach Study, to put your name onto a resolution asking for the City Council to denounce the racism, asking Sanders and Wingo to return the money. The rest of you have a duty to go through with this once you understand the problem. It is unmistakable. Eighty-seven percent of the population is Mexican-American. There is no reason why loss of services, there is no reason why taxes should be increasing exponentially. You know what? I know the retail housing market right now, housing market cannot buy a house. People are absolutely being imported into the city to buy houses that people cannot afford now. It is the legacy of Los Angeles, of many other major cities.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Thank you, sir. You've reached the three-minute limit. Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Michael Castro. Mr. Castro's topic is denying $72,000 requested by the El Paso Police Department. Good afternoon, Mr. Castro. Star six, please, to unmute your telephone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. You have three minutes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council. Again, my name is Michael Castro. So, the reason we're calling today is to discuss the $72,000 requested by the El Paso Police Department for equipment to test for THC percentage. Again, you guys, this is something that if we pass this or we allow this funding to happen, we are going backwards. New Mexico is currently about, or New Mexico is currently recreational, and sales will begin in April of this coming year. Cannabis is already in the city, and it's not hard to come by. I've already told you guys this over the past two years, how easy it is to get cannabis in the city, right? It's just as easy for someone to get pulled over and arrested in the city for cannabis as well. And it's going to become even easier with the recreational cannabis market in New Mexico. So, guys, as a city, we need to do something. We should be helping our people. We need to make sure that we have, like, drug rehabilitation programs instead of putting people behind bars and giving them records. The $72,000 requested, that's a small amount, you guys. It's going to be a lot more than $72,000 just to buy and purchase equipment to test for THC percentage. This is the same equipment that currently our dispensary uses to test for THC percentage, so we can tell our customers, so we can tell our medical patients, what it is they're purchasing. So you guys are going backwards if we allow the police department to have this funding, right? The funding that they're requesting for their development centers and things like that, I think that's awesome. But to have funding requested just to put nonviolent criminals, or we're not even criminals is the thing, you're putting nonviolent people behind bars because of a plant, right? Or you're, or now you're setting them up for failure because they have a record. Guys, in El Paso, Texas, you cannot tell the difference between CBD and THC. You're never going to be able to tell, and that's a problem. But the way to fix it is not going to buy equipment so we can convict people for this plant. We need to do something better. Again, currently, I currently grow CBD in El Paso, Texas. We are licensed hemp growers in El Paso, Texas. You guys understand that we grow the plant already in El Paso, Texas. It's the same exact plant, you guys. So, instead of giving the police department funding to purchase this equipment, let's do something better for the city, right? Let's help our people. Let's fix the streets. Let's fix the parks. $72,000 to $100,000 is a lot of money. It's life-changing money for somebody. There's so much more we can do with it instead of putting people behind bars or giving them records. One more thing, just to touch on real quick. My manager here at the dispensary I work for right here 10 minutes away from UTEP was recently arrested here in El Paso, Texas, over a traffic violation. He's a medical cardholder, and he had cannabis on him, and he was arrested. And that's sad, because he's been the manager here at the dispensary for almost two years and hasn't had a problem in New Mexico.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
And was just arrested. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Colt DeMores. Mr. DeMores, if you're in the queue, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Colt DeMores? Christina Lopez, if you're in the queue, ma'am, star six, to unmute your telephone. Or Stephen Strummer, star six. Stephen Strummer, Christina Lopez, or Colt DeMores, star six, to unmute your telephone. Stephen Strummer, Christina Lopez, Colt DeMores? I don't see any of those phone numbers in the queue, mayor.
Thank you.
That concludes call to the public. We return to the regular agenda. We're on page nineteen. Item number forty. This is a public hearing on a ordinance changing the zoning at 125 Balverde Street from R3 Residential and AO Apartment Office to SD Special Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number forty. There is no public comment. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tim Schwartzman.
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number forty-one. This is a public hearing on a ordinance changing the zoning of Lot 1 at 10005 Dyer Street from C2C SC Commercial Condition Special Contract to C1C SC Commercial Condition Special Contract.
Move to approve. Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number forty-one. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tim Schwartzman.
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. The next item is number forty-two. This is a public hearing on a ordinance renewing a special privileged license to the El Paso Electric Company to permit off-street parking with an apportion of rim road right-of-way by extending the term for another five years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve item number forty-two. There's no public comment on this item. On that motion, Mayor Pro Tim Schwartzman.
Nay.
Representative Anello?
No.
Hernandez?
No.
Molinar?
Nay.
Salcido? We've lost Representative Salcido. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
No.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion to approve fails with Representatives Schwartzman, Anello, Hernandez, Molinar, Rivera voting nay, Representatives Rodriguez, Liz Araga voting aye, and Representatives Salcido not present. The motion fails. The next item is number forty-eight, and this is discussion and action on a resolution amending the adopted 2021 Public Art Plan to allow for additional projects and allocations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the record, Ben Fife, Managing Director of Cultural Affairs and Recreation.
Good afternoon.
If IT can please bring up the presentation. Thank you. Next slide. Today, we have, we are bringing forward approvals for amendments to the Public Art Plan that was approved in January of 2021. There are seven projects that we are requesting changes on or are adding to the plan, and I will walk you through those individually in just a moment. The ones that you see between the blue lines are actually the ones we will be discussing. Next slide. This is just a continuation of what had been previously approved. Next slide. And before I walk you through these allocations and what we are requesting, I did want to take the opportunity to just share with the council and the community the opportunities that are available for public input on any public art project. I know there has been some discussion in the past about this, so I wanted to walk you through how each of these projects comes about, and so that you were able to see all of the ways that the public has opportunities for input. Public art really begins when the projects are discussed with Capital Improvements Department. As council is aware, this is a 2% for public art program, and so oftentimes, our projects are actually part of an integrated plan for capital projects that are coming forward. In other words, if we're building a new library, we oftentimes are tasked with integrating artwork into that new library. So we start the discussions with the Capital Improvement Department and the User Department. We then actually go to project artist selection, and oftentimes, that means putting together an artist selection committee. I have emailed many of you in the past to request members from your community or specific neighborhood associations in your districts to be able to serve as part of these panels. They're incredibly important, because it's a way for the community to have a voice in the selection of the artist that will be determined and that will actually create work that that community will live with. The selected artist is approved by the Public Art Committee and contracted, and then they actually hold community meetings, and many of you have been at those community meetings and have assisted to make sure that we get the word out as widely as possible. Those meetings are really important, because they help guide the artist through the process of what is important to that particular neighborhood or community in terms of their identity and what they think is important. Those designs are then approved and endorsed by the Public Art Committee. This is actually a selection of citizens that are appointed to be able to approve projects, contracts, and artists for the program. Those meetings are posted and are open for the public with public comment accommodated. The Public Art Plan is also brought forward to multiple boards, including the Public Art Committee, the Museums and Cultural Affairs Advisory Board, and then, of course, comes to council. And lastly, finalized design are also brought forward to the community as well. This is where we often come back to the same community that we initially started the conversation with, to be able to ask if the artist's final design has gotten it right, if they've incorporated everything that has been requested, if they've got the feel of the community or the specific neighborhood or the concept that we're talking about. So there are multiple ways that the community can get involved in this process, and we're really eager to ensure that that continues and that we continue to have even more public involvement whenever possible. Next slide, please. So the first, the first changes to the Public Art Program that we are requesting are the addition of two projects. The first will be for a mural at the airport. This would be a direct select with a local artist, and this is actually following a series of major aesthetic improvements that have been continuing on at the airport that I think have really added to the experience for El Pasoans who are traveling, and more importantly, I think, for people coming into our community for the first time. We also are requesting permission to be able to enter into contracts to actually recite an existing project, which is Sombras in Luz and A Novel Romance. These are projects that are located in Cleveland Square and also outside of the main public library. These need to be recited to be able to accommodate the construction and build-out that will happen with the MAC and renovations on the main library. And so, we just, as part of the process, need to be able to bring this forward to the council to seek permission to enter into that kind of contract. Next slide. Just so you see a little bit of context, on the left, these are the reading circles that would need to be moved from the library, and we're currently looking for new sites, along with the Papel Picado benches that are located at Cleveland Square, which are also part of the Public Art Program. And then on the right, you can see the location of the proposed mural in the airport, which will be a great segue as you're coming down from security after you've landed and actually right before you exit the building. Next slide. Here, we actually have two projects in which we are, actually, the amendment here is actually where we are requesting to move locations within the same campus. So originally, the approval was for a project at the Leo Cancelari Pool. For those of you who are unaware, this is the pool that is actually part of the complex with the West Side Naditorium. In actually, looking at the site, working with the team, working with CID, there really are not a lot of opportunities for us to be able to place public art in there. It is a really tight space. What we're proposing is actually to move the artwork and the project to the Galatzin Recreation Center, and specifically looking at the facade of that building, which could use a little love, to be able to reallocate those funds there. You can see they're the exact same address. However, per process, we do need to bring this back to the council. And we're actually, would like to change the selection process from pre-qualified artists to an open competition. Next slide. Here are two other amendments that we are requesting. On the top is for the Esperanza Moreno Library. This is a facility that is undergoing renovation. We would like to actually change the selection process on this project from the pre-qualified artist pool to an invitational competition, in which we would actually specifically be looking at local artists. And then again, at the bottom, another library project. This is for the main library children's area renovation. We would like to change the process from open competition, again, to an invitational competition, so we can specifically look at artists who have worked with projects for youth. Next slide, please. And then these are the last two amendments that we are seeking, and these are actually specifically around increases to the allocations or the ceilings that we had originally talked about. And this is really specific to the fact that construction materials have escalated significantly. You have heard this a number of times in other presentations with CID. Specifically- Specifically in Gold Team Four's uh, uh, budget update, we did let you know that one of the challenges we would be facing in this next fiscal year was going to be due to the escalation of costs related to steel, lumber, and other construction materials. And so here we are seeking to be able to increase our budget using savings that we have uh, to be able to make sure that we can actually deliver on projects at the same scale and quality uh, of what we have promised the community. And so with that, uh, that concludes the presentation. Do you go to the last slide? I'm open for questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we do have Representative Anello.
Hi, Ben, how are you? Thank you for the presentation. Um, can you tell me a little bit more about the airport mural? I'm sorry, didn't, I think I might have misheard you say a vacation of a mural? Or it's an addition of a mural?
We, so that is actually an addition of a project that was not originally planned for. Um, however, we have been working a, a bit with airport staff over the last two years um, in discussing how we continue to make the visitor experience better at the airport. Um, they have done a lot of work in terms of aesthetic improvements through the Public Art Program, through their own initiatives, as well as looking at ways to do public programming to just activate the airport, even if you're not traveling. Um, and so that particular part of the airport looks uh, like it is really uh, made for a very significant mural. Uh, we're excited about the opportunity to put a mural in the airport. We're a community that is well-known for our murals. Uh, and so the opportunity to be able to, to celebrate a local muralist at our airport, I think is something we're all very excited about.
Yeah, that sounds amazing. Thank you for the clarification. Have y'all um, already decided the artist, gone through the process? Or is this just the beginning?
So this would just be the beginning, ma'am, actually. So we are seeking the approval of council to be able to undergo that process.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Anello. Um, Mayor Potem followed by Representative Molinar.
Thank you very much. Um, one question, two questions, Ben. Um, first is, there is a, a price adjustment for um, Laura Teron's piece at the Country Club Roundabout. The West Side's favorite roundabout. Um, do we have an idea of when the timeline is um, for the beginning of that project?
So that project right now, we are looking at having it completed by November of this year.
Do we have an idea when actually people will start seeing installation or activity in that roundabout? The West Side's favorite roundabout.
I would have to go back and check with staff on that, sir. Typically what happens with most of our projects is fabrication and a lot of the work takes place off-site. Um, especially in things like roundabouts so that we try to minimize the disruption to traffic patterns. Um, but I can check to see when you will actually start seeing things like shovels in the ground there. Um, the artist is already working right now with the fabricators. Um, so there's a lot of work that is happening, but in terms of things that are visible to the public, uh, not yet, but I can come back, uh, provide you with an update in an email.
So you, you look at it being installed, completed by the end of this year at the side's favorite roundabout?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then my other question relates towards um, uh, maintenance, maintenance and oper- not maintenance and operations so much, but as we invest in our public art program, which is, you know, for all six state, if not in the country, and you have the
I'm sorry, Mayor Potem, you're, you're breaking up.
Sorry, can you all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was saying, um, so our public art program is one of the most successful in the state, if not in the country. And I was saying that MCAD has the receipts to prove it um, with the accolades and the visibility of the program. Um, my question is, as the program matures and as we have murals that become older and other projects that, you know, um, gain years in insulation, what strategy do we have to make sure that we also have funding set aside for maintenance um, of our public art program as well? Because a mural is great, but if it's faded or there's no ability to, you know, replace a piece or, or work on the maintenance of these public art pieces, um, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice. And I just would want to understand a little bit more. What is our strategy for maintaining our public art uh, projects and pieces uh, moving forward?
So that's a really good question, sir. And, and I would like to say that we have been very fortunate um, in the last, you know, couple of years that we've actually received a budget for maintenance, which we did not have before. Um, and I want to thank City Manager Gonzalez for actually uh, making that happen. In addition, we actually uh, do use some of our savings that we have um, that we, we accrue to actually do routine maintenance and also uh, you know, emergency maintenance as well.
It seems we're having technical difficulties.
Strategy is staff does assessments to see uh, how pieces are doing, the older pieces especially. And we figure out what are the best candidates for use of those funds for that fiscal year. Um, I would also mention that we are going to be undergoing a master planning process uh, that will guide the program for the next ten years that should begin in this next fiscal year. And maintenance will definitely be a big part of that discussion because you're absolutely right. We have a much bigger inventory of works and we need to make sure that, that it's not just the new ones that look good, but also the older ones, sir.
And if I say, Mayor Potem, the, that's part of our overall financial sustainability plan that Robert and I have been briefing during, not only the budget of process, but also throughout the year. So the race civilization fund, the fund balance being increased, uh, having more set aside funds for different departments. And, and this particular budget, we shared with the council and in, in previous budgets, I think the last two, uh, we attempted to put more dollars towards a certain area. I think this one was probably the mo- more, most robust, where we've hit several departments in terms of putting monies aside for them for improvements, but this is going to be a long-term plan that needs to be executed. And every time we have a chance to put money in it, uh, we need to do that. So it, it's going to take time and effort and commitment uh, and also the council voting uh, for these particular assets uh, each and, and every budget year. So that's part of our plan. So when I mentioned those other funds, those funds and funds like the ones that Ben is talking about and the other ones like the uh, sport courts and other things like that, that don't make the uh, the top of the list every year like streets do, uh, are areas we need to put more dollars towards.
Okay, great. I just, I ask that because again, I think if, if we're going to be talking about this, we can't just necessarily talk about the, you know, the, the percent set aside we have for those projects, but also what are we doing again to make sure that we are, don't come into a situation that we have in, you know, some of our other public facilities where we have deferred maintenance? And with something as visible and as successful as our public art program, I think it's really important that we have that. And it's really good to hear, Ben, uh, Mr. Fife, uh, that uh, we, that we are setting aside funding dedicated towards maintenance of our existing public art program. Um, and exactly to the points you raised, City Manager, as well. I think that's, that's smart and fiscally responsible um, actions by this staff and by this body. So, um, again, I think that's important that we do that and make sure that in budgets moving forward that we have a, a judicial and responsible approach towards maintenance of those, those uh, public art projects as well. And I'm looking forward again uh, to seeing the installation of Mrs. Teron's um, public art piece in the West Side's favorite roundabout on Country Club Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have Representative Molinar.
Are you on my time, Mayor? Thank you.
Pardon me? Um. Hello, hello?
Go ahead, sir.
Um.
Roger.
Ms. Prime?
Yes, I believe Representative Molinar was next.
They can't hear you either.
Thank you, Ms. Prime.
Oh, there you go.
That's the West Side's famous roundabout. Anyways, thank you very much for this presentation, Mr. Fife. That is a beautiful gym. I can tell you that much, I've seen it many times. I wanted to find out, identify what funding source, any of the uh, allocations, the increased allocations, where they would be coming from.
So typically, sir, we have a, we have set aside funds from areas where we cannot necessarily incorporate public art, uh, but we've received a two percent allocation. Or oftentimes when we uh, we actually do not use the full allocation, uh, that goes into a fund which we can then use to supplement projects later on. Um, we can also use that for maintenance. And so it's funding we already have. It's basically already in our piggy bank. But we do have to come to council to seek permission to be able to use those funds.
Okay. And uh, for each project that you enumerated, that's pretty much a um, reasonable ballpark figure that is needed for that project to be uh, changed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fife. Great job, thank you.
Thank you. And we have no um, other questions?
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution on item number forty-eight. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein.
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido? Salcido?
Give a thumbs up for her, huh?
Salci- Representative Salcido?
She's
Oh, okay, I, I see her thumbs up. Thank you. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Ms. Prime, Representative Salcido has asked if we could um, go back and reconsider item thirty-eight?
May we have a motion to reconsider item thirty-eight?
I believe it's item forty-two.
No, Rep- Representative Salcido has asked for item thirty-eight. And we'll come back to
Okay, sorry.
No, it's all right.
Is there a motion to reconsider item number thirty-eight?
She's saying something, but she's muted or she's not coming across.
No, we can't hear. So we'll, we'll, we'll skip that for a minute and we'll go to Representative Liz Araga has asked to reconsider for a presentation of, on item forty-two.
Yes, Mayor, if we could see a presentation
Is there a motion to reconsider?
I would ask my colleagues to reconsider that.
There's a motion to reconsider item forty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reconsider item number forty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'll take a roll call. This is to reconsider?
I, I would like to see, I, just asking to see a presentation on the item.
We still got to reconsider the item.
To reconsider?
No. They don't want it.
Representative Schwartzwein.
Roll call?
This is, yes, sir, this is to reconsider. Representative Schwartzwein?
Nay.
Anello?
No.
Hernandez? Molinar?
Nay.
Salcido?
Uh, this, this is the item where
Forty-two, ma'am. To reconsider.
Technical difficulties. I believe this is the item I
No, this is item forty-two. We'll come back to yours in a minute, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Uh, no, but this item I wasn't able to vote. My computer um, logged me out.
Do you wish to reconsider, ma'am?
Well, if I could see the presentation, I didn't get to vote. Um, and I know that I didn't vote, so it doesn't allow me to reconsider. So I didn't know if my
You can re- you can reconsider, ma'am. You just can't make, you just can't make the motion to reconsider, but you can vote on the reconsideration.
Okay. I do like, oh, it's my, my computer logged me out.
Okay, so I'll take that as an aye. Representative Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Nay.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
We have a tie? Mayor?
Nay.
The motion to reconsider fails. Is there another item that
Uh, yes, item thirty-eight, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to reconsider item number thirty-eight?
So motion to reconsider item thirty-eight.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reconsider item number thirty-eight. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar? 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 Thank you. Salcido?
I ask this item to be reconsidered. I just, to err on the side of caution, I do have land in that zone, the downtown
What we're reconsidering, ma'am, is that an aye to reconsider?
Yes.
Thank you. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion to reconsider passes. We're on item number thirty-eight. And this is a public hearing on a ordinance approving an amendment number twenty to the project plan and reinvestment zone financing plan for tax increment reinvestment zone number five to allocate up to one hundred thousand dollars of the tax increment reinvestment zone annual revenue to the Downtown Management District Commercial Facade Improvement Program.
Representative Salcido?
I just wanted to um, err on the side of caution. I do have land that's um, in the Downtown Management District. So I, I would like to abstain from this vote. So that is why I'm asking to reconsider this.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item number thirty-eight. On that motion, Mayor Potem Schwartzwein?
Aye.
Representative Anello?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Molinar?
Aye.
Salcido? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Liz Araga?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously with Representative Salcido abstaining. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move. Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the regular council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August third, twenty-twenty-one is adjourned at twelve fifty-two PM. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.